I didn't have my mic on, but.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. And you're going to hear kind of the fruits of the labor of many in this room, particularly our budget staff. I'm very proud of them, and Shirley, you have an amazing group of individuals that work for you. Jennifer, thank you all for getting us prepared, and Maria and her team also. We're going to go over a few things that they've been working on with us. So today, basically, what will be happening is the elected officials and the deputy county managers will present their budgets to you. The primary focus today is just going to be on the general fund. So there's going to be some emphasis on some non-general funds, which will be the behavioral health. As you know, that's the 20 million plus that we get every year, GRT. Also, the healthcare GRT and the PILT Fund, the Payment in Lieu of Tax, will concentrate on that as well. So, and as you know, you all don't have to vote on anything today. No final decisions will be made. This is simply a presentation, an opportunity for us to present the budget to you in a little more detail and for the public to be able to meet with Shirley and her budget staff regularly, several times a year. And so this is just something that has been just a constant collaboration with staff and with our elected officials. So we continue to review our priorities. This is a continuation of the forecast for the recurring revenue and expenses. So the balanced budget at this point is $884.8 million. And of that, $374 million is a general fund, which is, just so you know, it's about 6.3% higher than it was than the FY22 budget. 1.6 million for general funds, for general sub-funds, so this is the PILT, the Community Service Fund, and the Regional Detention Fund. And also, it consists of 507.2 million in non-general funds, which includes 199 million in life-to-date expenditures. As you know, and as I continue to let you all know, we have been fiscally responsible. We do our best. I think we pride ourselves just in the fact that whenever we do projections, we're very conservative. We're very careful. We're very mindful of what could and could not happen. There's a long-term perspective that is always taken into account, and the budget decisions are based on strategic planning and goals and objectives. And that's where I talk about Maria Zuniga and her staff, and of course Jennifer Gallegos and her staff. They're tying these into our budget now. So we're not going to go into a lot of detail about the strategic planning and goals this morning. It's going to be about, we're basically going to be talking about numbers, just so that everybody knows. And then before we go into the strategic planning and goals, staff will be meeting with you all to explain those to you in great detail. The FY24 budget plan includes changes for debt service and contractual growth. We've maintained our 25% DFA reserve. As you all know, that's required. So, and this is basically in the amount of $115 million. So that's recalculated in September with the new budget. Also, we've maintained our 5% revenue stabilization operating reserve. You'd be glad to know that. There has been no issues, no problem with that at all. And then also our $5 million unfunded pension liability, which we actually opted to do. And that really has served us well whenever we present during our rating agency presentations. That was real important to them, and we sort of anticipated that. And a few years ago, Shirley and I made the decision that we would put money aside in that pension liability reserve fund. Also, just wanted to again highlight the fact that we've maintained our AAA ratings on our general obligation bonds and our gross receipts tax revenue bonds. We've received the double A-plus ratings reaffirmed on the GRT bonds on all three rating agencies. So again, you know, today is just going to be about the numbers. And I want to just remind staff really quick, you'll be presenting your slides. And Dana up there, just sort of give her the cue and let her know when you want her to advance the slides, and she can do that for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for having us today. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much, County Manager. And I wanted to note for record that Commissioner Benson, Vice Chair Benson and Commissioner Chris Cody are excused for today. And thank you to all the staff who've worked so hard to put together this budget for us today.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager of Finance. And first, I want to start by thanking Jennifer Gallegos and her team. They've been awesome throughout this whole process. We started back in, I'll say, October timeframe or so, planning for this budget process. We've met with you all. And then I'd also like to thank Maria Zuniga and her team, because they also worked with the budget team to come up with, to link the budget to the strategic plan, which is something that keeps us in alignment and also following with you. I'd also like to thank you all for taking the time to allow us to come present to you early on and talk to you about the budget and address your concerns. So with that, and thank Ms. Dana. She is our PowerPoint control person, so if she tells me I can't go, I can't go. So the next slide. So this slide here is just looking at our general fund revenue trend of our two biggest sources, which are property tax and gross receipts tax. Property tax is on the bottom line, and gross receipts tax is on the top line. You can see that from FY21, when we were in COVID, going up to everything kind of leveled off, and then we saw a little bit of recovery in FY22 when we did the adjusted budget. Looks like our projected actuarials, we look like we might get to 206 million. However, when we look at our growth, we have to go back to the adjusted budget to the next trend. So we're anticipating an approximate, just true, GRT growth of about 3.5% over FY22. We are also, the property tax is just pretty steady. It's about 2.5% steady growth. Even though the assessed value may change, we're capped by the state on how much we can earn in revenue. And then you have to offset it with the delinquent taxes and things like that. But our treasurer has done an awesome job of collecting that information. Next slide. So property tax and gross receipts tax make up about 94% of our general fund revenue. These are all of the other miscellaneous sources, which, as you can see, they're small, but they still do matter, and we still put them to good use when we stir up the pot and make up our general fund budget, which we then support our expenditures. Next slide. So our revenue budget is basically $374 million. So with that, we have to present a balanced budget. So we have our expenditure budget, which is also $374 million. This is one presentation that by state statute, we're required to provide. As a county, certain mandated services and other services are not mandated. So this is just a breakout of the budget by those mandated and non-mandated services. Manded departments are the assessor, the county commissioners, the clerk, fire, rescue, metropolitan detention center, court of wills, estates and probate, procurement and business services, the sheriff, the treasurer, and the youth services center. Everybody else is in the non-mandated piece. We also have a piece where we have to cover our debt service payments for our general obligation bonds that we issue in our GRT bonds. So that's what the debt service payment there is out of that piece. Next slide. Something that always comes up, because public safety is a very critical factor for Bernalillo County, as is for any county. So health and public safety expenditures make up almost $234 million of our budget. And as you know, you also enacted a tax back in fiscal '17 to dedicate to public safety. So when we look at that, public safety is funded by the general fund. There's funding in the healthcare GRT. There's funding in the public safety tax, which I just mentioned. And then the behavioral health tax to support health and public safety. And it's divided amongst the departments of the Health and Public Safety, DCM, the Emergency Communications, Emergency Management, Fire and Rescue, Youth Service Center, MDC, Behavioral Health, Animal Care Services, and the Sheriff's Office. So that makes up the health and public safety expenditures. Some of the next slide, please. So I'll kind of end my slide with the chart off to the right kind of shows the new items that were added to this year's budget. A lot of them were labor-related in terms of positions that were added, and then adjustments to the operating expenditures, such as for cyber liability, contractual increases and things like that. So we added about $5.4 million to the budget this year over last year. Some of the things we have to consider is the continual fluctuation of state and federal funding that we get, whether it's the matching grants, the capital outlay. All of those sorts of things have an impact on how we can shift our funding to support our initiatives that we have. Increasing healthcare and safety service costs. I sit on the multi-line insurance pool board, and we've seen, Madam Clerk, who's the chair, the president of the NACO Board, knows that insurance costs have really skyrocketed. And they make up a large portion, like our law enforcement insurance annual premium. Just the premium payment is almost $6 million. And multi-line, which covers our general liability, is about another $3 or $4 million a year. We're also trying to be competitive with our salaries and employee retention. I'm not sure what COVID did to folks, but a lot of folks aren't working. And then, so there's a limited amount of people, and they're being pulled six ways from Sunday. Even within our own county, we trade staff around. So we're trying to make sure that we, to the best of our abilities, can address those issues and working with the county manager and the HR director on that. Also, economic development funding, that's real key for us as a county. You do a lot of things with the industrial revenue bonds and things like that. But if we can grow the economy, then that results in bigger tax increases, but also the well-being of the Bernalillo County and its residents. We also have to maintain our assets. You know, we have to get our buildings looking good, keeping our fleet looking good, as well as being safe for our public safety officers that are out there driving and responding to emergencies and our road crews and all of that. So we make sure that we take that into consideration, as well as our office buildings and our community centers. One big thing, and you know, earlier this year, we got hit with a cyber attack. And so thanks to our CIO, they'd already started working towards that. But a lot of cyber is reactive, and there's a portion that's proactive. And so we're trying to do more on the proactive side to protect the county. We were able to come back fairly quickly. It was painful, but we were able to come back. And we're still working through some of those things. So we're also trying to just modernize our technology and our systems. We have a lot of old systems, which make them more vulnerable to cyber attacks. So we're working on getting those systems replaced as well. And then we have our nonprofit funding requests. As a county, we typically reach out, or the nonprofits reach out to us to assist with their funding and their funding needs, so that they can better serve the community as well. So with that, those are some of the things at a high level that we have taken into consideration in this budget cycle, as always. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Sanchez, our Director of Accounting and Budget, and she'll get into a little more details. And thank you again for the opportunity to present the budget.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. Today, I will be going over the FY23-24 budget review at a summary level. Before I begin, I would also like to recognize the budget staff. I would like to recognize them for their analytics, compilation, and preparation of this presentation. We have Jennifer Gallegos, our Budget Manager, Maria Reese, Crystal Treheu, Dana Sanchez, Amber Bonestil, Justin Selsar, Carlos Sanchez, and Ariana Espinoza, as well as our interns. So thank you. The FY23-24 general fund revenue expenditures projected budget is $374 million. Approximately $244 million makes up payroll and $130 million operational. This presentation will primarily focus on FY23. The FY24 escalated factor will be reexamined for the FY24 data. Next slide. There were various types of activities that took place to arrive at the criteria being presented today, which departments were provided with budget approved in April 2021 for FY22 starting point. Adjustments were approved in FY22, and they were added. And there was budget in-depth review meetings held with departments by the budget staff and budget reviewed and analyzed additional funding requests provided by departments and management. A budget retreat was held with the county manager, deputy county managers, and budget staff. There were briefing sessions with the commissioners. Next slide. This slide signifies a balanced budget for FY23 general fund with revenues and expenditures at $374 million. This is a DFA requirement that we present a balanced budget on an annual basis. Next slide. The FY23-24 revenue is comprised of various revenue sources for the general fund. General fund revenues for FY23 is $374 million, as mentioned, which GRT makes up 54% and property tax at 40%, other at 6%. The FY24 revenue is projected at $382 million. Next slide. The FY23-24 expenditure budget is broken down by division for general fund. This slide breaks the budget down by division. The general fund budgeted expenditures of $374 million is comprised of health and public safety at 29% and MDC at 19%. Also is a breakdown by Board of County Commissioners, district at 1.2 million. Next slide. In comparing the general fund payroll versus operating, payroll makes up 65% and operating at 35% with payroll at $245 million and operating at $129 million. Overtime is reflected at $18.6 million, which is 7% of payroll projected cost. This slide reflects general fund expenditures by function, which public safety makes up 47% and general government at 30%. The general fund payroll union versus non-union of $244 million equates to 61% union and 39% non-union. This slide also mentions unrepresented, which refers to rules and regs. This slide is a breakdown of contractual services. The general fund operating amount of $129 million is broken down by operational and contractual services. Operating funds, non-payroll, makes up $59.7 million, whereas contractual services is at $69.5 million, which is the majority. And there are five types of contracts. To the lower right-hand side, there's court initiatives, county-wide contracts, city-of-Albuquerque contracts, which are MOUs, MDC contracts, and information technology. This is another FY23 summary of the budget, which I'm not going to go into detail. But we need to provide this to DFA for all funds and categories. There's two pages to this. We also have it for FY24 there again, which I'm not going to go into detail. This will be reviewed and updated as we prepare for the FY24 budget. The FY23-24 healthcare GRT fund planned expenditures of $13.8 million. This reflects MDC medical contract at $11.2 million, which covers inmates and other expenditures at $2.5 million. Next slide. This is a tax that was approved by Board of County Commissioners in FY17. And this is dedicated for public safety to address some needs. The health and public safety GRT allocation by purpose in the amount of $14.7 million is broken down by the Public Safety Department with new staffing and miscellaneous salary adjustments of $6 million. This slide represents a total of behavioral health GRT recurring expenditures of $29.3 million. And fund balance appropriations are comprised of $29.3 million recurring and $16.8 non-recurring. There will be more detail presented by the departments. Department of Behavioral Health Services, also referred to as DBHS, has $8.1 million in planned and recurring expenditures, broken down by administrative prices, prevention, and community supports. More detail will be discussed for the departmental slides by Deputy County Manager Perez. $13.8 million of behavioral health initiatives, also referred to as BHI, encompasses recurring expenditures for administration, prevention, community supports, and housing. There again, Deputy County Manager Perez will go into detail. The FY23-24 PILT Payment in Lieu of Taxes contains recurring expenditures for schools, health services, and economic development for a total of $1.3 million. This is tied to IRBs, also referred to as industrial revenue bonds. The PILT Fund is broken down by area. The $4 million can be used for one-time initiatives in the respective areas, for example, APS, UNM, economic development. So moving on to next steps, we have some key dates. March 23 through April 1, there's necessary adjustments that will be incorporated. These would be final adjustments. Please note that adjustments during this time will result in trade-offs or budget reductions to remain within the $374 million. The budget will be presented on April 12 to the Board of County Commissioners for approval and then submit it to DFA by June 1 as a requirement. The department's slides will now be presented by the elected officials and DCMs. And I will now turn it over to Ms. Julie Ann Baca, and she will cover the commissioner budgets. Thank you.
Good morning. We'll just wait for them to get queued up real quick. Okay, so I won't take up too much of your time. My name is Julie Ann Baca, Commission Services Manager, Burnley County Manager's Office. And your first slide you're seeing is the commission's summary. As you all know, I work very closely with you, along with Ms. Angela. There's no significant changes to your FY23-24 budget, $100,000 for DDF. And we are continuously working with your priorities within your district to spend down that funding. And I stand for questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michelle Aguilar, Deputy Assessor.
And my name's Clyde Ward, Deputy Assessor as well.
This morning, we are presenting our fiscal year 23-24 budget. We have $3.6 million in expenditures, which most belong to, are appropriated to our payroll salaries. We have 49 positions within the general fund, another 50 positions within the valuation fund. And then our assessor fees, we collect about $4,000 in revenue. Next slide. Is there another slide? So here, and the next slide, please. So here are some highlights of our initiatives. Our first initiative is training and professional growth. We will continue in our commitment in providing staff with continuous training for professional growth that supports the mission of fair and equitable assessments for the Office of the Assessor by ensuring our appraisal staff is proficient in conducting accurate appraisals to determine and maintain current and correct property values and that entry of all ownership records are entered correctly and in a timely manner. We also have our second initiative, continued enhancement of technology to best serve the citizens. The Assessor's Office will continue to maximize the use of our software applications for both our computer-assisted mass appraisal system and aerial imagery for desktop and field reviews. We will continue to strive to provide the highest level of customer service by continuing to be a government agency that is user-friendly, efficient, transparent, and professional. And our last initiative, educational tools and community outreach. We will also continue to provide the taxpayers of Burnley County various educational tools and community outreach opportunities on the role and responsibility of the County Assessor's Office. And what the responsibility of the property owner is when it comes to their assessments. This ensures property owners are aware and take advantage of property tax-saving programs that are available to them. Most importantly, Assessor Giddings and her administration and the Office of the Assessor will continue will continue to administer the New Mexico Property Tax Laws and Rules and Regulations in a fair and equitable manner. May I stand for any questions? Thank you.
First of all, I do want to say that I believe that our Assessor's done an excellent job, especially bringing everything up in terms of technology, and so I think that's been great. So your, so the assessment, I think that Shirley mentioned that we can conservatively assume that there's like 3% increase, or 2.5%, I think 2.5% increase conservatively in property tax increase. Is that...
I will refer that question to Clyde Ward.
And I knew you were all wondering why I got to come up here.
Can we go to the Assessor Summary slide?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, in regards to that, yes, the property values are allowed to come up by a 3% cap that has been placed on it by the legislation. You'll notice that it doesn't always have to come up to that because the ultimate goal is current correct value. So if a property is at that value, it will not go up at all. It only allows for that maximum increase there. If it's 1.5%, it'll come up that amount. Or if it's a brand-new property, it will not come up because it's its first time on there. So we have some new construction that has also been included in there. But for a safe projection, I would say, yes, Chairman, Commissioner, that would be the appropriate choice there, is to kind of balance it out by that increase as we see things changing throughout the market. Right now, we're expecting increases across the board as far as property values go and, you know, what the Realtors Association has been telling us as well.
Okay, so then, because property values have gone up, right, and substantially, then you have the ability to assess up to 3% in addition. So then getting to current and correct could actually take longer at 3% per year.
Yes, ma'am, you are, I'm, Madam Chairman, Commissioner, yes, you are correct. Yes, ma'am, that, when we have that huge spread, the Association of Realtors is saying about a 20% increase in properties. If anybody here locally has tried to purchase a home, it has become a real challenge. Inventory's down and prices are in bidding war.
So really, people who own property can expect a 3% increase probably in their property tax for a little while until current correct, so what is current and correct? How do you define current and correct?
That would be, Madam Chairman, Commissioner, that would be the market value of the property, basically, is...
How you determine that is because you cannot, my understanding is, we are not a state that tells or is required to tell a sale price of a house, so you're doing comparables? Is that how you're getting to that number?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that is not quite correct. It is, New Mexico is a partial disclosure, and that it is disclosed to the assessor, but we have to keep it confidential, and it is not considered part of the property record card. So we do have good sales information on residential properties. However, on our non-residential properties, there is no disclosure at all, and we do the best that we can to retrieve data that is provided to us through questionnaires and reaching out to the public, and then we use cost from those positions there.
Okay, we do, I'm just asking these questions publicly because we do get questions about property tax, right? People feel like, how come my property tax goes up every year, and you're basically saying why. One thing, too, just for clarification, if a property is sold, it could go up more than 3%, right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, that is correct. That is when it is allowed to come to its current correct value, is in that you're following the sale.
Okay, so do we have any state law regarding if people are in the house for a while? Like, for example, you have people that have lived there a long time, and they're basically selling to their children or keeping a house in a family. Is there anything around that? I know there was tax-lightening issues, so is that...
Madam Chair and Commissioner, in regards to that, there's nothing specific on the length of ownership, but there is, for those over 65 years of age, they can freeze the value as long as they don't sell the home. But there's nothing really in place other than for longevity. There was some proposed legislation that had kind of floated through in regards to that as increasing possibly the head-of-family deduction that would be on there, but there is nothing at this time. Once it sells, then it does go to current correct value regardless. There are a few categories in there, that if it's out of a trust or something like that, or to a spouse or one of those other things, there are a few exceptions to that, but most on a change of ownership, it will change and go to current correct value.
Okay, probably something that the legislature should look at again seriously because that's going to be a real problem, especially now that values have gone up. Taxes will really go up, and for especially families that want to leave their, sell their house to their kids or something like that, that number's going to go up. Even if they transfer ownership, that number will go up, is my understanding. Yeah, that's basically the wrong direction we want to go. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Any other questions? Awesome, thank you. I believe we have the Sheriff's Department next. Oh, there we go.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Sheriff Manuel Gonzalez with Quinn Nguyen and Chief Deputy Josh Campus.
Thank you.
So Quinn, did you want to come over here and do the summary of the sheriffs? She was begging me to do this as we were driving up here.
Good morning, Madam and Sir. For so BCSO that we have a budget for our next fiscal year is of 55 million, or closer to 56 million. And majority that we pay for the payroll, that is of 53 million at the 29.7 million. And the payroll benefit, we go into, that's what we expect, about 16, more than 16 million. That is take about 30% of our budget, and our payroll over term is at 3.5 million. And the non-payroll for our operation expense is going to cost us 6.1 million.
If we could, I think there's a couple other slides we wanted to cover. Maybe the next one? Okay, so some of the upgrades that we're looking at for our RMS system are Command Central, so we can get the crime stats and the trends to our public safety stakeholders like yourselves, to the community. We get many requests from the media oftentimes asking us why we can't provide that. We need that in order to get those updates and get that data filed through that system because at this current time with the existing system, we don't have that ability. So that's something we'd have to pay for. If you look on to the next circular staff vacant court positions, we do have some issues with staffing. Our warrant section, because it's the competitive pay, we're finding that we're having a hard time staffing people because we need to be able to compete with the city or state or other entities that are paying a higher wage, and that's something we need to look at. The other thing that we have issues at the courts in terms of security is the double-dipper law. We have something that restricts us from hiring it. We're going to have to really consider of doing sworn positions and maybe consolidating some of those budgetary things for our, I'm going to say our court security staff, and turn those into sworn positions so we can keep the court secure and the judges safe out there. That's been an ongoing issue over the last several years. If you go on to the increased fleet budget, we're noticing escalating costs for the vehicles. The build-outs for those vehicles have gone up beyond inflation, so we're looking at anywhere from sometimes $7,000 to $10,000 per vehicle. That's the cost of the vehicle for a police car, and that doesn't include the build-out. The build-out could be an additional $3,000, and that's something we've noticed over the last several years. And that's going on throughout the country. The competitive pay to staff we're looking at is because the increased, or recent increase for the Albuquerque Police Department, they got a significant raise to include some bonuses. I think at this point right now, they're averaging almost $4 or more an hour than our deputies, and it's going to be very hard to compete with salaries and staffing our police, or I should say our sheriff's office versus the police department. If you go down to the next row of issues, there are design-build metro air hangar. That's in the works. There, I know under Sheriff Corin has worked vigorously with some of the Commissioners, the County Manager, and looking at, I think, almost, putting aside, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars for that initiative, and that's something we want to definitely address in the future. I think that was one of the County Commissioner Stebbins' issues when she was here having a seat. She wanted to make sure that the hangar was built and that we had a facility and that we didn't continue to have dilapidated facilities and upgraded services for the people. If you go on to building the Northeast Substation, that's something that we have some capital outlay money, about 350K for, or I should say 350,000 for the record, and making sure that we start that project. What we would need, because we are asking for, in the next five years, 50 additional positions, we do have five positions from the COPS program at 1.3 million for five positions. So that's something that after three years, we'd have to assume in our budget. But what we need to staff that substation is probably 25 people in addition. So that's what we need to, to actually staff that. The geographical areas would change in terms of service. We would actually be patrolling not only the Northeast Heights, but part of Carney Well to give us some traffic enforcement along the tramway corridor, which is often complained about, drag racing and other issues that they're seeing and the increased crime rates in those areas. If you go over to the warehouse for BCSO and BCFD, we're building, we're in the process of looking at building a joint academy, and they want to make sure that they have the appropriate facilities for all the assets that they've acquired over the years and making sure those assets are taking care of adequately by building a, I'm not going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to say a carport, but a facility that protects those vehicles. I think we lost the last portion of that slide. And then also fund the BCSO metro air unit, subs, I'm not going to, hangar, but also a substation. And I really think that's headquarters. Part of the reason for a new headquarters was to be, to be able to decentralize and protect the assets of the county, the commerce, community policing, expanding that, and then obviously trying to get more into the schools and dealing with that risk, youth in the community. So part of the reason of decentralizing our police services is to get closer out to our constituents, our citizens, and provide them with adequate services. So that's the reasoning behind decentralizing our police services. Is there any questions?
Thanks, Sheriff. So on the, my question for the substation, you're going to, you're going to build one? So what you have now is probably kind of looking at design or whatever. Do you have property already allocate, or kind of earmarked for that?
I think the County Manager can probably respond to that, correct, County Manager?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, we do have property identified on, let's see, Paseo Del Norte and it's...
U-Bank.
U-Bank.
Okay.
So we do have, and we also have set aside, we do have some funding to get started on it.
Okay, I just, you know, I was just wondering what the size was because I know that we partnered in the South Valley with a, you know, with a property owner, and I just, I didn't know if that was one of the options to kind of save on that, right? And, but if we don't have that opportunity, then yeah, you got to build it from scratch. And then, so you're just kind of waiting on the training academy, am I not, is that not correct? We're building that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, that's correct. It is currently going to be under construction, and the site has already been identified.
Okay, so then that would be something that we're moving forward with. And then what, what is, what, I mean, I know this is just a budget meeting, but what's the plans for the air unit and substation?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, so in speaking with the Sheriff and Under Sheriff Corin, we decided to do a request for information. We did an RFP before, and we decided we'd go ahead and kind of cast the net a little bit broader just to see what's out there and to see what kind of ideas people had to construct the facility.
Do you know, do you have an idea for a location, Sheriff?
Yes, did you want to comment on that also? Or I know we were looking at some property at the airport. It seemed to be the most adequate to provide services in order to respond quickly to whatever the needs are, whether it's a rescue, patrol services, and/or a fire. So we felt the city location was probably the most appropriate.
So what would be the conflict with airspace and commercial travel? Would that, would that come into play at that area?
No, no, Commissioner Casada, Madam Chair, there's no conflict. We've worked out of that facility several years ago. We had a pretty good situation there. Unfortunately, that didn't work out, and it seems to be the most optimal position to provide a service, so that's why we identified the city airport.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You bet. Thank you.
Madam Chair, did you have...
Yes.
Thank you. Sheriff Gonzalez, what is the starting pay for deputies? And how long is that period for starting pay, and then when would they move up, and what would that be?
Commissioner O'Malley, Madam Chair, at this point, it's right around $30 an hour, is that correct? For deputy first class. And I believe currently the Albuquerque Police Officer that's equivalent to our deputy first class is making 34.50 per hour. Is that correct?
So that's, is that starting pay then for this first?
That is a topped-out first-class patrol officer. If you start talking about a second class, whether it's a patrol officer or deputy, they get paid a little bit less.
Okay, I was just wondering, you know, because when you're having, well, obviously, it's very important what to kind of take-home pay ultimately, right? Benefits are important, too, but it's like, what am I taking home, right, to bring to my family, that sort of thing? So after they, so during the academy, are they, are officers paid during that period when they're training?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley, they are paid during the academy. That starting rate's $19 an hour? $19 an hour.
And then soon after the academy, are they, do they go to this higher rate or...
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley, Madam Chair, after they graduate from the academy, they go to deputy two status, and that's, do you know that hourly rate? Goes, they go to $28 an hour, Commissioner.
I guess, I was just real curious, from the academy, graduating from the academy to the higher, is that about year's service before they reach that top end?
Commissioner O'Malley, that's after a six-month period of going to the academy. After they graduate, they go to the $28 an hour rate.
Oh, okay, so they actually get there pretty quickly?
Yes.
And you're saying that APT has $4 more an hour at this point?
At their top pay, yes.
At their top pay?
Yes.
Okay, and the top pay for a deputy is $30 an hour?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the top, top pay for a deputy? Now, I'm not talking about officers or anything like that. That's, okay.
Yes, and Commissioner O'Malley, Madam Chair, that doesn't include the incentive they got to sign up at the Albuquerque Police Department, which is over $5,000 one time. I don't know how long the commitment is. I think it's five years that they have to stay there, but they get $5,000 on top of that, and they got some longevity pay. So there was some additional benefits they received to sign up for the Albuquerque Police Department.
And this bill that's, that bullet that says competitive pay to staff, there's a little thing that says housing. What's that about? Why does it say housing there?
I'm not a...
Competitive pay to staff, housing and sheriff. Somebody just put that up there for the heck of it? Okay, I was like, what is the housing? Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Sorry.
I had a couple questions just for my own learning. You talked earlier under the Sorry, I had a question, a couple questions. The, for mostly for my education, on this second bubble, um, you had said about double dipping in and turning those into sworn position. Can you just inform me about what that means? Or what the issue there and and to solve the problem needs to be?
Madam Chair, uh, in, I believe it was two thousand and ten, they uh enacted a double dipping law, which does not allow uh law enforcement or public safety personnel to go back into uh para. So that restricts us to have the ability to rehire people and have them come back to these jobs that are a little bit less paying, uh, but they have qualified people. So it restricts us from doing that. At this point, because we don't have enough people to rehire at this point, now we can't staff the courthouse adequately. So the solution to that is to make them full-time deputies, so they can staff that. There's a solution. Uh, we just can't go back to rehiring people that have already retired, because that used to be our first option.
So if you make them into a sworn position, like you were saying, then they, they still get their para, they still get to do it?
Yes, yes, uh, Madam Chair. And that's something that we'd have to consolidate, because the pay for somebody that's being rehired is, is much less than a full-time, full-benefited sworn deputy.
Okay. And then I think our last question, just again, from my knowledge, I'm trying to piece everything together. The training center's gonna be on Rio Bravo, right? And then, okay, yes, that's, I see. And then the northeast substation is happening and the air unit at the airport. But then there was these two bullet, the two bubbles, the, they seem that they're the same, or the unit is for a substation unit? Is that connected to the hangar or?
That's a little, the, you, that's a little confusing for me too. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll clarify that, but my understanding is the substation for the northeast subs- sub is at Paseo and U-Bank. The new academy is in the location of Rio Bravo and Broadway, a little bit south of that. And then the uh uh air unit would be loo- being looking at at the Albuquerque International Airport.
Okay. With the hangar, probably.
Yes, with the hangar, Madam Chair.
That, that was it. Thank you for me. Thank you, Sheriff Gonzalez.
Okay, Madam Chair, Commissioners, have a great day. Thank you for having us.
We have um treasure summary. Here comes treasure verse. Come on down.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. It's good to see you this morning. Usually we see each other in the afternoons. Let's start off the I'm sticking with water. Um, let's go ahead and start with the treasure summary. That's up on, on display. Thank you, Dana. We appreciate that. Um, as you can tell, most of our uh expenditures, almost eighty-five, eighty-six percent are for payroll. Uh, with uh only sixteen percent being non-payroll and those are some contractual arrangements that, that make the treasurer's office run. Um, also with the revenues in the bottom right, um, you'll see we're keeping it very conservative, uh, with that interest on investment at two million a year. As you can imagine, we're coming out of two years of COVID and an economic uh situation that was quite slim. So uh, we're hoping though that uh we'll have the opportunity to see rising rates in this environment. And uh, you'll, you'll see us exceed that. But we want to be conservative for budgetary reasons. Next slide. As we look at how our department supports and aligns uh with the rest of the county's strategic goals, you'll see that we are under government accountability, excuse me, physical and strategic alignment there. Um, and you'll also note that uh earlier Deputy County Manager Reagan talked about uh forty percent of revenues were from property taxes. So uh, you could probably put a T in all of those boxes that you see there as we contribute to all the benefit of the county. Next slide. And here are the bubbles, and I, I love that phrase. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, of how our priorities and initiatives fit into uh the, the planning process there. Um, and most of them you can see are very realistic, collecting current year property taxes, investing in staff resources uh that help us address community needs for educating property owners and payment programs. And also pursuing collections on uncollectible and delinquent personal property business equipment and mobile homes. Um, that's something that, that I initiated when I started, because it was just very glaring that we had um many millions of dollars sitting there in delinquent taxes that had never been pursued. Not even with a postcard or a letter going, hey, did you know you were delinquent? Uh, so we've been working very hard on that, and of course, I report that out to you quarterly with the Board of Finance. Um, also, some of the things that we've been doing um is initiating that treasury transformation of cash handling throughout the county and different departments. Um, and that was especially true as we moved into the government center here in August. Uh, we had seven different um departments and elected official offices that we knew handled cash and that would benefit from having a single online payment vendor, as well as a single integrated uh cashiering software system. And in the first year, we completed four of those. Uh, and that was planning, treasury, economic development, and Parks and Rec. Um, we're looking to complete the other three uh in the next year, and they're in different phases. I know with Madam Clerk, uh, we're working with her office uh and trying to have that accommodated in the next six to eight months. Um, but having that separate online payment uh that is part of the cloud and was not connected in any way to the Burnaleo County website really came through for us when we had the cyber attack. Uh, it was the last week of property tax collections, uh, and we could easily say, yeah, our systems are down, we were the ones hit, but our vendor is in the cloud. You can go to that, find out what your payment amount is, and also arrange for an online payment through your credit cards, your debit cards, or even an electronic check. So it was very helpful to us and the, the public to have that. Additionally, we'll be looking to add two new positions uh to our office, a community outreach person, as well as an IT person, as we get more and more involved uh in making our office being as dynamic and as current as possible to meet the taxpayers' needs. We really see that we need that IT connection there. Many of us are very good at computers and databases and working it and spreadsheets, but I don't know any programming languages. My staff doesn't. So to know what's going on on the backside of a software is not my expertise. So we need some of that to come forward into our office. Also, as we did this transformation, we also realized we have to put things down on paper and write up those processes, write up those policies and procedures. Um, as boring as it seems, uh, those are what keep you going. Uh, you know, look to the manual, what about this? What happened when I did that? Uh, so you can really uh historically capture what that software is doing and what your processes are doing. Um, lastly, coming out of COVID, uh, we are looking to uh reengage in outreach events and assisting the public uh wherever they are. You know, with, with Parks and Rec, they kind of laughed at me the first two years, because, you know, I was almost part of their staff with movies in the park. And, and now I'm like, I don't get to see my movies. Let me out of here. So uh, I really look forward to going back to that and seeing the public uh and hearing their feedback. That's always what we want to hear and how we can meet them wherever they are. So I stand for any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Treasure First. Any questions? Yes.
Um, where's, where's the bucket?
You know, I didn't make up the slides.
I just want to know how you went from a, a bucket to a bubble. That's all I was Other than that, I like
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, I, I have the same question.
Okay, well, thank you.
At least they got the green right.
They did.
You know, so I have green buckets.
You do.
That's right.
Uh, no, I just wanted to thank you very much for your report and your hard work, and, and I think you made a valid point when it comes to technology. I think, you know, uh, most departments are gonna have to start looking at, you know, how, how they can better navigate that due to, you know, cyber attacks and those sorts of things. So thank you for bringing that up, and uh, again, I appreciate your report.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just ask, I, um, when you said about those systems, I always think of, um, I love any way we're uh making si- simpler our systems or run smoother together. You said there's three other, you've been able to already get like five or out the way, four Parks and Rec Economic Treasure Plan. Like four, and that, that means that those are running on one vendor and can and so the other three just means that we're simply making the system simpler. Like what would be the evaluation of that, doing those programs onto one system?
Well, I think uh Madam Clerk is probably the, the perfect example of uh where we need to modernize uh that online payment system. Um, and it's kind of like banks, actually, with this online software and, and merchant services is many of them have been collapsing uh from, you know, ten or fifteen vendors down to a solid four or five vendors. Um, and, you know, they all say they want to play with each other and be on the same team. But when you get down to talking to them, they're like, oh, no, we don't, we can't show you our software and how our interfaces work. That would be proprietary. But then we're like, but you've signed an agreement with us that you're going to be agnostic. So you have to really engage them and hold their feet to the fire and accountable, because we're accountable to the public. Um, and we want the best deal for our taxpayers that we can get. It's not about profit for companies. It's about what is the best deal for our taxpayers? And uh, so we're having that discussions now about, come on, let's, let's move off the, the dime here of you said you could do this. We signed an agreement with you, and let's get it done. Um, and they're really dragging their feet. Uh, so much so that we had to enter into another contract with an old vendor uh for online services for, you know, a year. Maybe even longer. So that's, that's some of the hmm, the politics of technology, if you could say there was such a thing. Uh, but it's, it's out there.
Thank you, Treasure First, and also thank you and your team and department for all you do to keep us rolling like you said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good morning.
You too.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. I'm Lori Frank, the Probate Court Administrator. And I'll stand for any questions that you have. Our budget is very limited. It's mainly salaries and benefits. And we're probably down one position right now, so we're working on getting that filled. And the next slide. So that's where we fit into the schematic of the government. Next slide. So Judge Karbengal is working on some informational videos to help customers see what we do and how they go about working with us. She's already completed one of those videos. And that's already available online, so.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I think they're missing a zero, right?
I know.
Zero missing? No, it's just a small.
Let's add one.
We're very small.
Yeah, it was small, but, yeah, thank you. Uh, and I know how important, you know, your department really is uh for families navigating. Um, and so, uh, I know my family recently had to deal with it, so we really, really appreciate you.
Thank you.
I don't think people say that to you guys enough.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Publicly say that, that I know it's a tough, hard thing to navigate, and that's why I was wanting to add a zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Madam Chair, with your permission, since we have so many screens here, I'll give my report from here, if that's okay? Alrighty, this first screen, it'll tell you that we've got fifty-one uh employees normally in the clerk's office. However, as you know, now we have elections every single year, so that is a permanent approximate number of people that work with us. But through the course of the elections, by November, we can swell anywhere from seven hundred to nine hundred people that are working through the clerk's office to handle elections. Um, this is all kind of broken down. You can see how the benefits and payroll salaries and things are. Next slide. Okie dokie. We work really hard to take care of, as Madam Treasurer said, the, the process of spending the taxpayers' money wisely and efficiently. We also uh work very hard to, to modernize our office with technology, as, as the treasurer was saying, there's lots of new programs and things out that we're working on using. We try to do uh the best we can do with up-to-date vendors. And we use the best uh software we can find and vendors for elections and election night reporting. And that's really important, that we don't have anything that fails us that evening, because the whole wide state is looking at Burnaleo County, because we report real time. I'd also like to say that we're working real hard with recording and filing. When we moved into this office, it split our office. Half of recording and filing is on the second floor, half is on the first floor. So it's very difficult for us to share and, and cover all these spaces. If somebody's sick or somebody's out or has a doctor's appointment, somebody from the second floor will need to go to the first floor, somebody from the first to the second. So that leaves us an opening at one of the other areas that we can't service the public. So we're working and we're in the process of trying to add six people, six positions, into recording and filing, so we can do better customer service for everyone, and we'll talk about that a little bit longer, a little bit more. For the uh community, we engage all over. We'll go to any cat fight that'll have us. We do PSAs, we go to the schools, we do community services. We always have uh tables at naturalization programs or any kind of an event for voter registration. We have voter registrars that we train, uh, train regularly and send them out. And so we work real hard on doing that. Um, on these bubbles, I, I didn't make the bubbles either, so I'm not gonna hit on all of them. We're trying to get our salaries increased for our, our beginning people. They're only twelve dollars an hour, and that's really difficult for people to live on, so we, we have a big turnover a lot of times in the clerk's office on that. You know, I want to, to tell you folks that you are probably not aware of the fact that I think, this is my opinion. I think in the clerk's office, you probably have the best management team or one of the best in the county. These folks are very proud of their jobs. They're very proud of what they do. Uh, they take care of each other. Uh, you're very fortunate to have these folks working for you in the Burnaleo County Clerk's Office. So with that, I'll say thank you and ask for any questions.
Thank you, Clerk. Um, any questions for Madam Clerk? Any questions for Madam Clerk? Yes, great job. And I'd love to increase the community engagement ways to, or help or do what I can, but yay for, and thank you. All right, County Manager, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I'm just going to go over numbers a little bit with you. So first of all, just the revenues for, in the County Manager's Office. So MDC total is one point two, and then the total of the County Manager Division is one point six million, and that's revenues. That's just, we're just talking about revenues. Next slide. Expenditures for the County Manager's Office total is eighty-eight point nine million dollars. And of that, sixty-nine point two million is, comes from MDC as far as expenditures. So most of it is absorbed at MDC. Next slide. And just to sort of give you an idea of the positions, so their total in the County Manager's Office is seven hundred and thirty-seven positions. Of that, six hundred and twenty-five positions are from the Metropolitan Detention Center. Next slide. And so again, as this indicates, it highlights the focused areas that the County Manager's Office supports, aligns, aligned with the county's strategic goals. And again, we won't go over that into detail. Shirley and Maria and Jennifer and Jackie will be going over that with you. And then we'll be going over it in public again. Next slide. And then just really quick, now getting back to the bubbles, I just wanted to talk about just a couple of them that I think you probably would agree with me are pretty important. So one of them is the improvement of the MDC recruitment, retention and operational improvements. We know that, you know, we need, that's something that we really need to look at and discuss. You know, we hear about it every day. And so it's something that we really need to take care of. As you know, there's just, it's just such a challenging job at the MDC. You all know. And I know that you understand it, and I know that you care, and your intentions are to do something about it. And, you know, we are going to take a look at that. And also, I just wanted to bring up the development of the new classification and compensation structure. That's something that needed to be done for decades. I'm just going to say that. And it's hard. It was something that was hard. It was, I sort of equate it almost to, well, to moving into this new building. It takes a lot of courage and it takes a lot of support to do it. And it takes great staff to do something like that, to pull this off. You know, but we're here and we're real proud of the fact that we are here. And one of the other things that we all wanted to do is we want to pay our employees well. And so our Human Resources Department, you know, spearheaded by Bernadette Pettis, who has done an amazing job, and her staff have spent countless hours. I think we've been working on this for years, maybe three years, something like that. And we can't do it without our budget staff. And again, we can't do it without your support. And as you know, you know, the intent of this class and comp, we talked about this several times, Commissioner O'Malley, we've got to bring in people at a higher wage, so we're looking at fifteen dollars an hour. It wasn't easy to do that, it wasn't easy to identify the funding, but it was the right thing to do. We have to pay our staff well and we have to acknowledge their good work. And I just want to tell you that I just appreciate so much the fact that you all are supporting this. And again, we couldn't do it without the great work of our staff. So, you know, Jackie and your staff, thank you for your fine work with your Budget and Accounting Department. And Shirley, thank you. We just, you know, again, we couldn't do it without each other. So that's really the end of my presentation, unless you have any questions, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. I like the comment that we have to be competitive, right? So if government is going to mandate anything, I think we should be the first ones to be doing that and not expect, you know, private entities to do that and then we don't do it ourselves. So the old put your money where your mouth is, is, you know, I know I say that a lot, but I think it's a true statement when it comes to that. I just have a question on MDC because we were going over this, and I might have said it earlier, but does the budget, the sixty million for MDC, does that also include the healthcare provider? And the stuff that we provide at MDC? Does that, is that included in the sixty million dollar budget?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, it does.
Okay, because I didn't see it on any of the...
Oh, actually, it comes out of another fund, I'm sorry. That doesn't include that. That's just operations for the MDC.
So that's, so yeah, so that's not even including that?
It doesn't include that.
So it's sixty million plus?
Plus, for the, yes.
Which pretty much makes that the largest piece of our budget.
Absolutely, it's the largest contract that we have, the medical provider.
Well, I think just even in our budget alone is Burnley County. When you look at the pie, if you would add that, I think that even makes it probably the largest piece of the pie of what we use our funding for.
Correct.
So I just, you know, and you know why I want to make that point.
I do.
And so there's a reason why I'm making that point, that, you know, that we're taking care of a lot of people at MDC and not all of them come from just Burnley County.
That's correct.
And I want to make that point because, you know, as we move forward, looking at how we change that and how we fix that, that we're going to need more people to be a part of that pie, is what I'm saying. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I agree, and because it takes a village. But can we, yeah, I think you pulled this up. Can you explain that? Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead. I want, can you explain that point? Because I know, because we just finished that, I believe the medical contract was like sixteen million dollars, but can you explain, was there a reason why you pulled up this thing?
Yeah, just for the clarity, the medical contract for MDC is approximately seventeen million dollars annually. Eleven million of that is paid out of the healthcare GRT, which is for indigit funding, and the other five is coming out as a part of that sixty-nine.
Right.
So you were right, Julie, it's not all of it, but it's a part of it. So what we've tried to do over the years is shift most of that cost onto that healthcare GRT because it's an indigit type. But Commissioner Casada is correct, it covers the medical expenses for all inmates that are housed at MDC.
And then you said the five million came, comes out of the general fund or?
Out of the general fund, so it's a part of the sixty-nine.
Okay. But there is other funds that this is coming, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. I realize that there's other funds that contribute, as you mentioned that for the, but it would really be good to get a sense of what really does it cost for us as a county to run a jail? I mean, that's probably one of the biggest things we do. It certainly is the most frustrating things we do. It's very difficult to run a jail, I think people need to know that. But other than this healthcare, which is big, are there other things that really are not in this number? Would there be other things that are not in this number that are, because they're coming from other?
Well, there are one-time items that...
Yeah, not one-time, but most operating.
But from recurring?
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Malley, when we talk about behavioral health services, you know, some of those services are dedicated to, you know, the inmates and the people getting out of jail. So absolutely, and that's a very good point. Both of you made very good points, that's right. So it does, it's not just the sixty-nine million dollars, it's a sixty-nine million plus the seventeen, well, minus the five. And then, you know, then you have some other added costs for behavioral health, and then there's other contracts, that's right, that are, that we use to assist over at the MDC. So that's correct.
Well, in terms of the first bullet, which is the, or the bubble, which is the MDC recruitment and retention, operational improvements, I know that that's hugely challenging. We've had many conversations, I know you have with other Commissioners, about what we need to do. And really, in a lot of ways, we're just waiting to, you know, hear what the strategy is in a little bit, you know, to be honest with you, because, I mean, I can't come up with a strategy. I think we're waiting for staff to say, this is what we need to do to change that. But I know it's huge, huge weight on everyone, the jail is, and so just want to let you know that.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, thank you for asking that question because I just got in my inbox, we've been working on that very thing that you're asking, because how do you know how to fix it if you don't, if we're not telling you, if we're not giving you information? So we will have some information from, for you, you know, regarding incentives and just ways that we can recruit people to want to work there and stay there.
And I do want to thank you too for really moving forward with, you know, this is something that, you know, you and I have been talking about, it's like, because I think the Governor made that decision to raise the fifteen to fifteen dollars just for state employees. We certainly need to be able to at least match that, as I said, to be competitive. But also, just to bring people up, I mean, they're not able to make a living, a livable wage is probably closer to twenty dollars an hour, to be honest, right? But, you know, at least we're moving up from that. And I know the compression issues and all these things that came up really made this a bigger expense, a recurring expense. Because when I first, you know, when we first talked, it was like, well, wow, you know, the increase in revenue is pretty significant. But it's my understanding that a portion of that, or a large portion of that, is going to go to, you know, helping our employees, you know, to get to a higher wage level. So I'm glad to hear that. And you're right, that particular contract that we had for analyzing, like, the different positions, it's been going on for some time now, for several years. I'm glad that everybody's working on it now. You have actually a plan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley. And I also wanted to mention kind of what, you know, the sheriff was talking about, APD getting raises. Well, the Santa Fe County just gave their corrections officers raises. So, I mean, there we go, then we're, you know, we're being asked to, you know, we should probably do better, and if not just match them, but we should be paying them more because we have so many inmates and just all the services that are provided there at the MDC and all the expectations of the CEOs out there.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure where McLendon falls in all this, but as we talk, and maybe that's a whole nother conversation. You got two bubbles, that's how important the recruitment retention is.
I noticed that, Madam Chair.
I'd just like to make it...
It was a mistake.
No, I also want to...
But it's important.
I also want it, no, it's just silly. Thank Bernadette and all the staff working on the compensation side, I think it's going to be so great. It was one of the, yes, thank you for all your work, all your staff. You know, it's, we're one of the bigger employees in our small, little, but big county. So, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Casada, that we have to be the model. And I guess the, so these are the priorities all out of the Commission Management. The only last part, and I'm so happy to work with you on the Criminal Justice Council and the strategic plan there, and appreciate the ways you're trying to bring the behavioral health sort of into this, and I guess I'm just seeing that in that bubble, but how we think about strategically about behavioral health in with our criminal justice reforms.
And Madam Chair, I do want to mention, you know, Maria and her group, we were trying so hard to get in the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council people to really understand and to really kind of buy into what we were doing with the strategic plan and to participate. And now that we have, you know, Maria and her section devoted to that, dedicated to that, it's really come a long way. And as you know, when we go to the meetings and we have just meetings for the strategic plan, we've got one that's almost developed.
Yes, thank you so much, and to Maria and the team there too. I think that is so important that we have somebody helping coordinate that work, so thank you. Thank you, County Manager, is there any other questions? No, okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, always a pleasure to get an opportunity to be in front of you and present on behalf of Health and Public Safety. I'd be remiss if I didn't start out by first thanking each and every one of you for your ongoing support. These last two years have been extremely challenging for all members of public safety. In order to, we're carrying out our normal, everyday jobs in addition to navigating through a pandemic that none of us have ever experienced in our lifetime. So I thank you on behalf of all the men and women that proudly serve in the public safety roles and look forward to ongoing support as we move forward. So in front of you is the revenues that will be generated or expected to be generated in the 2023 year for Health and Public Safety at one point six million dollars in revenue. Next slide. So overall, Health and Public Safety is obviously the largest group within Burnley County and takes up a large sum of the monies within public safety. So currently, the general fund expenditure is about a hundred and five million dollars. A lot of that, or a majority of that, is in the Sheriff's Department at just under fifty-five, and then the Fire Department behind that at twenty-eight. But you can also see it spread out amongst the other entities that make up public safety. Next slide. So all in all, as mentioned, we are the largest, we are the largest facility or largest number of employees within Burnley County at just over a thousand employees that make up public safety. Do you want me to step back for just a second, Commissioner O'Malley? Did you want me to step back for just a second?
Yeah, well, I have a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't realize my mic was on, so I remember, yabby, yabby, yabby.
That's okay.
Sorry. Okay, so I have the question, because just go back to animal care.
Okay, go back one slide. Go ahead.
Okay, so that looks like payroll.
The payroll salary is about two million dollars for animal care.
Okay, and then that's going to be what's proposed, is what you're saying?
Correct. And the preliminary budget, if you take everything into account with the payroll taxes and overtime, we're looking at animal care at about four million when everything is set, four point five million.
Oh, so when everything is with...
Yes, ma'am, the total package, basically.
Okay, I was just curious about that because I know that that's a stress department. I think it's really largely to have challenges in recruitment.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, you know, I'll be honest with you, all of public safety is stretched extremely thin right now, with the exception of probably the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, which maintain their staffing because folks don't usually, we don't experience the turnover. But youth detention, Department of Behavioral Health and Animal Care, we are definitely feeling the stressors that everyone else is feeling similar to MDC. We're having a difficult time maintaining our staff because our wages aren't competitive. We don't hear about it a lot because they're kind of the smaller entities, but they are struggling just as much. So we're looking really forward to the compensation study and making us that much more competitive amongst the other surrounding areas, because you are correct, animal care is one that's really experiencing some stressors right now as it relates to staffing. I'm more so on the animal care technicians area, those that are in charge of taking care of the welfare of the animals, cleaning after them, feeding them and such, so, correct.
And so are these, would these people be in the white collar category or are these folks that are not?
No, so actually, all of our animal care techs are not unionized. They are rules and regs right now.
Rules and reg, okay.
Yes.
But pretty much white collars throughout the...
We've got white collar, blue collar, IFF and BCSDA, in addition to YSC has their own union. So we've got a number of unions. I think I've got almost all, all eight of the unions are part of public safety in one way or another.
Okay, well, I guess I should have this question to the County Manager. Where'd you go?
She's right.
Hi, ma'am. The question is, so this is, I may, I don't know if we should talk about this now, but I mean, it's a little, so we're doing this compensation study, we're looking at all the positions, but we still have these unionized positions which have to be in negotiations with the unions. So that is something, I mean, I just want to say that, I think that for a long time, we've looked at, especially white collar positions, those are entry level, those are people that are, you know, usually dealing with the public or they're front positions and that, you know, we really want to make sure that we take care of those folks.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, do want you to know that they were included in the compensation study, but we can't just, you know, we can't just compensate them, it has to be negotiated.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
All right.
Yes, Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, Chief.
Morning.
So in that budget, and I know, and I know that we don't provide like to services through animal care, our animal care facility, we don't provide like, you know, so if my dog, I need to take it to get, you know, spayed or neutered like the city does, we don't... We don't, we're still not providing that, or is that gonna be increased in our budget? Is that we're gonna start providing that?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Kassada, we do provide that on a limited basis, um, depending on how men, how many surgeries are scheduled for the day. So we've got a phenomenal veterinarian in Dr. Moyer. Um, she averages about twenty-five spade or neuters in a day. The average vet does five. So if that gives you any idea of kind of what we're up against, we're housing over two hundred animals right now in our facility. So we're busting at the seams there. Once we get things a little bit more under control there from a staffing standpoint, from an adoption ability, uh, the, the pandemic has had us closed down for a period of time. Um, once we're able to get animals fostered out, we're able to get our adoption programs up and running and a lot more stable, then we hope to be able to open those services such as veterinary care up to the greater public. And you'll see in our strategic plan, there isn't, there is a plan for doing some microchipping and other things as more kind of a community service, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, cuz, uh, I mean, I know that the, that, that services are for just the animals you have in your care because before you can adopt them out, they have to be spayed or neutered and stuff.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kassada, that's correct.
So, yeah, so, but I'm just talking about, you know, uh, how they provide that service, uh, through the city, um, for people who wanna do that. Um, something that I just would like to, you know, uh, make a, uh, kind of a point of is I know my office, every week we go and we take pictures of the dogs and we post them on our social media. And I would like to invite all our other county commissioners to either, we could send you the pictures so you don't have to do that, but, you know, start, start post, posting that so we can get some of those animals, you know, in the families. So, yeah, so like when, uh, you know, I'll, I'll just say this, before Breaking Bad, um, you know, I had to go provide those services for my pets. And, um, you'd have to, you know, you have to sign up and then you'd have to qualify that you did make X amount of dollars a year. And then with that, they provide, you know, they would do spade and, and neuter and, and checkups and they microchip and, uh, you know, uh, and, and they do follow-ups and it's at a very affordable or almost nonexistent price. And, you know, I think that's something that's important, especially for, you know, parts of our district, the North Valley, the South Valley, uh, the International District where, you know, uh, we want them to adopt dogs, we want them to be pet lovers, but, you know, it, it, it becomes challenging, uh, the cost. And so that's why I was asking sort of, is, is that gonna, is that why we're, are we gonna increase the buzzet, the budget to do that, to provide those same services? Because I think it's important, um, I think it's important for, for all of us and, and especially, you know, for us who are, who are animal lovers to have that option, you know, in Burnley County. I think we have a lot of dogs running around, right, and then we catch them and then, uh, we gotta provide those services. But, you know, if we have our facility full of dogs that aren't being adopted, it's hard to, you know, to get to that point. And so we're really pushing through my office, you know, to, to put pictures of these dogs out there and, you know, and hopefully that people will go and, and, and adopt and, and help us, you know, because these dogs are fixed, uh, they're ready for adoption. But I'm talking more about people who buy a dog from, or get, or like in my case, my daughter show up with a dog, you know, and, uh, then you say no until you pet it and then, yeah, and then there you go, you're in. And, you know, what can I do and how, how do I go to Burnley County, you know, to make sure that, that we're doing it properly and being proper, you know, pet owners? So that's my question. Uh, thanks for answering that, Chief. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Kassada, we hear you loud and clear. And again, our, our long-term vision is to be able to start to offer that system, I mean, that, that kind of service. But we have to get our, our house in order first before we can start to expand to that level. And we're working diligently to do that. It starts with staffing, it starts with some additional programming, um, policy and procedure. We're, we're new in this business. I mean, we were running our, our animal care facility out of an old fire station. So we've, we've gone from a, a tiny little mom and pop to a huge, large industrial restaurant, for lack of better terms. So we're still adjusting the menu, uh, and, and that's kind of the best way that I can, I can phrase it. But we are, we are looking for a lot of different things with Animal Care and I think the sky's the limit with what we can do there once we get our feet under us and we're, we're feeling good about things.
Uh, Madam Chair, just to clarify, we're, we're, we're not feeding dogs. We're not, you know, just.
No, nowhere.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, I just wanna say something in response, I mean, basically, continue this conversation. If there would be, uh, maybe do an estimate or something like that, you know, we're really trying to, to limit or limit the sort of the population. I mean, we gotta go there first, right? If we just continue to, for, for, you know, animals to breed and then we end up with all these puppies and then they end up where they are, and so this is just a problem. I'm sure that there are some families that would wanna maybe be able to, uh, you know, spare neuter their dog. It's the costs, right? So it's, the cost is prohibitive and so it's expensive. So is there a way for us to have some sort of a, a, a program where we issue some kind of a, you know, so somebody can go to a, to us, another, you know, a private, uh, vet, veterinarian or make some kind of deal? Because you're right, you can't, you know, we can't staff up with veterinarians to do this. But there's a lot of veterinaries around that would do that. What could we do to help support that? Because over a hundred dollars, it's not gonna happen. I mean, that's, when you've got that kind of a fee, people are gonna make decisions like for food instead of mainly.
And, and Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, we did have a vouchering program prior to the pandemic coming through that did just that. It took half the price off of a spade and neuter for someone who was looking for that service. So we look to bring that back up again as we start to open those doors up, you know, seven days a week. We've, we're only operating three days a week right now, because that's all that staffing will allow us to do safely and to allow the public to come in in a safe manner. So once again, we get ourselves open to that, that capacity and we start getting people back in, get our programs back up and running, um, kind of dust it off. Then we'll look to do the vouchering program and any other out, uh, you know, outreaching stuff that we can do from an animal care standpoint. We've got a solid team in place. They're just, again, they're, they're starting to get their feet under them and understanding that entire realm um, and what we can do to, to get the most benefit.
And, and then, you know, we talk about these vouchers, just putting my two cents here. We really need to look at what really is affordable. I think sometimes for us, it's like, well, yeah, we got fifty percent off, but a lot of us could probably afford to do it. So I really want us to look at that, um, because I could see, you know, we're talking about fifty percent off and it's still seventy-five dollars to somebody, that's not gonna happen because you're gonna make a decision, seventy-five dollars. You can make a dis- so we really wanna do that on that end because what it does is it'll, it'll have savings long term to the, to the department if we can get that number down. And that's what I would hope us to, hope to do is that, that we come back with a program that says, yes, it's significant. You know, people at the lower income will make that decision, you know, it's not outrageous. I think that's what we're, we're, we're basically dealing with this right now. We've got folks who are making decisions about housing, uh, food, because everything's going up, especially housing. But really, we've got folks on the edge and whatever we can do to encourage that to happen, to reduce the population in the, in the animal care facility, I think would be good. That's, those are my things.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I hear you loud and clear. We'll work with Shirley and team to see what we can come up with financially. You bet.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, because my kids know not to bring animals, but as soon as they're, they're young adults and so the first thing they did was get it. And so I right away told them, you go right now to the city and get all that done. And so with their income, they were able to qualify for that. But yes, the more access and sort of outreach, um, I had a couple of their questions about, um, the, I, does, does, I was just really impressed and I thought it was great, right, that, um, we made some connection at some point where some of the folks that are, um, living residential at the CARES campus were then, um, able to start working at the Animal Center. I guess when we think about recruitment, I think people, I hear a lot in my district from dog owners about how important that is to folk, to their health and safety and well-being. I guess thinking about recruitment in those areas, you know, this is a level, like, can we work with some of the, like, Crossroads for Women or others to actively try and recruit in those spaces that people, you know, this is an entry level job, right? I don't know if HR helps with recruitment or how, how is that often approached?
So, Madam Chair, great point. And as we go through the slides, you'll actually see it's one of our bullets. And one of our strategic plans or goals is to work together with our SAC clients in the Department of Behavioral Health at the CARE Campus to get them outsourced into some type of employment, be it within the county or outside of the county. Uh, but one of the, the strong initiatives that we did during the pandemic, and really they saved us at the Animal Care Facility, is we used some of the SAC clients from Margarita Shop at the CARE Campus, we used six of them, um, that rotated through the Animal Care Facility. And again, they were God sent. Without them, we probably would have been in a lot worse position than we were today. Um, they, they earned a great trade and we hope to actually be able to turn around and hire some of them as they finish their program or complete their six-month program at the CARE Campus. So we're all about trying to find that way to integrate, you know, the, the individuals that are recovering at the CARE Campus into, you know, future employment within Burnley County. And again, you'll see that as one of the strategic goals, um, established by the Department of Behavioral Health.
Awesome. And sorry, I see we have lots of slides still left for you, but can I just ask real quick on the, on this position slide? I see the behavioral health that there's two, the youth services and there's, is this saying, I guess I wanted to speak clear. This is staffing, but this is staffing out of GRT, not Behavioral Health Initiative or, I'm trying to understand how all the.
Which one are you referring to?
So under here, under the Behavioral Health, there's both the, um, Be- Behavioral Health Service grant funded and it's, yeah, I think that's the seventy-nine peep staff. Is that what it's saying is covered? And then thirty-nine under.
Correct, Ma- Madam Chair. It's the, it's the difference between what's on the, on the general fund and what's done by the, by grants, that's paid by grants. The majority of the, the employees at the CARE Campus are grant funded.
And so neither of this, because dear, I'm trying to understand for myself.
Is behavioral health tied in here?
The behavioral health tax, the one that she's talking about, where it says behavioral health, uh, Behavioral Health GRT twelve zero zero six. That's the behavioral health tax. So in chief, he has a combination of behavioral health and some public safety entities. So that's the portion that's funded out of that GRT.
Okay, okay. And then the other one is grant, like you were saying, like, maybe we got a federal grant or other grant?
Yeah, I think, I think, Madam Chair, what it looks like is it, the, the behavioral health, the BHI hasn't been separated out. So it's kind of misleading. We're seeing, we're seeing the DBHS staff that is paid primarily out of grants. And then you've got the behavioral health staff, which is paid out of the, out of the tax itself. I'm, I'm believing that's what's here.
Yes, it's, so on this particular one, it's the whole entirely Charlie's area and Margarita's area is the whole.
So they're both under here for, for this reporting is what's happening. I didn't realize.
There's also some miscellaneous positions, you know, like for the, um, just lost my thought, the positions that were with the Sheriff's Office and some of those.
Correct, some of our, our CIT teams and our MCT teams are inside of that number as well.
And so the total hundred eighteen is both those in both, under both, and that's like under Margarita and Charlie's divisions? And the hundred eighteen is staff?
Madam Chair, that's correct. So it's a combination of what we have at the CARE Campus, what we have in the Behavioral Health Initiative Charlie side, in addition to what we have out at the Sheriff's Department and that we have out at MDC as well. So it's kind of all spread out, the to- total amount of staff altogether.
So this is representative of all behavioral health staff?
Yes, ma'am.
That count, that are county staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that was all the question I had on that. Sorry, go ahead, proceed.
Let's see, so we, we talked about the staffing, where we're at. Let's go to the next slide we can look at. So we, we sat down with Maria Zunica's group in preparation for the strategic plan. So you'll see under there, Public Safety, um, our area and highlights. What we'll go through now is just some of the areas with each, where each of the respective groups tie back into the overarching public safety strategic goals or plans. Next slide. So the first one we looked at is safety and emergency preparedness, um, under nine-one-one communications. Next slide. So that breaks it down really, I mean, it's kind of technical, but things that they're looking at or requesting. I'm just gonna highlight ones. I'm not gonna read each of the, each of the bubbles. But establishing and training staff on common alerting systems, and that's an important one. City of Albuquerque is coming up on the P1 CAD system, which will finally allow us to actually integrate our CAD systems and be able to dispatch for one another and truly get a closest unit to, to a call. So our goal long-term is to get ourselves established and up and ready and trained to be able to, uh, do that once that time comes. So that's something we've been waiting for, for a really long time. So that's one of the big initiatives going on at the communication center. In addition to more space for, uh, servers, observers and re- keeping the recordings for nine-one-one calls and then an uninterrupted power system, which we continue to, to build on the system that we have today. But we want something up there that is absolutely uninterrupted in the event of a, a large-scale emergency. Next slide. So fire and rescue ties back into two of the overarching public safety, um, initiatives. Next slide. And again, I won't spend a lot of time going through each and every one of those. But obviously, the, the biggest goal for, for fire and rescue is to prepare for medical emergencies and an effective emergency response, which is absolutely critical for fire and rescue. Fire and rescue recently went after an accreditation through CPSE and part of that accreditation monitors the response times that they have. Basically, we call them runtimes. From the minute a call comes in, how quickly do we have wheels rolling to that emergency? So that's something that we haven't done necessarily as well as we should. And we're monitoring and want to get into a better area and have a lot better response time. You'll also see there, um, the accreditation starts to call for a long-term program that puts four pers- four people on each of our apparatus. City of Albuquerque has always ran with four firefighters on all of their apparatus. We've done it with three. We've done a darn good job with three, but it's outside of NFPA's, uh, recommendation. So our long-term goal is to get all of our units within Burnley County up to the four-person staffing, understanding that we've gotta be mindful of budget restraints and that that's gonna take us a period of years to actually achieve. But again, as part of the strategic plan, it's something that we want to, to try to reach for. We're also looking on the fire and rescue side to do a lot better job at community risk assessment. Um, we haven't done as well as we could in that arena and we're looking to, to really do a better job. And what that means is if we see a number of fires happening in a certain area code or, or, I mean, a certain zip code, we go back in and do a little deeper research to understand what is the, the root cause of those fires. And if we determine it's smoke detectors, then we run a program to replace smoke detectors in the homes in those particular areas. Um, that could be even from cardiovascular issues. If we see a number of, of deaths resulting from heart attack in a certain respective area, that we're able to go in and increase that as well. So moving forward, if we look at Department of Emergency Management, um, they reached, they, they met three of our overarching public safety criteria. The big ones for the Department of Emergency Management is to develop and execute exercise to test plans, uh, and access preparedness. And I've gotta tell you, if we didn't do this prior to this pandemic, I think we would have been lost. So Richard Clark and his team have done a phenomenal job in preparing our county for the worst of the worst. And that was evident, um, in the early stages and then the monitoring of, of the pandemic. We were able to get shock clinics up and running. We delivered over sixty-five thousand vaccinations ourselves as a county, um, due in partnership with Parks and Rec, Public Works, and almost every entity within Burnley County had their hands in those efforts at some point. That's doing large part to developing and practicing and exercising those kind of, kind of things in the event of a, of a large-scale incident. Moving on, if we look at youth, uh, the youth center, so they met two of the areas that are the overarching public safety's, uh, strategic plan. Next slide. Wanted to make sure, one of our biggest goals there is coordinating, uh, of care with behavioral health for juveniles. So that is a really big deal. We've got an expansion that came before you a couple of commission meetings back that requested some monies for us to be able to build out a portion of the CARE Campus to do just that, to be able to take care of some of our juveniles, which is one of those gaps that we refer to, um, in, in the overarching behavioral health realm. The other piece is continuing on with something that Commissioner O'Malley had instructed us to do a number of years ago, and that was the full remodel of the Youth Detention Center. So we are almost there. Um, we have the nursing unit still left to do, um, and then just finishing off some of the final touches. But that was something that Commissioner O'Malley had, had charted us with doing about three years ago. And I'm happy to say that we're almost there. We just have that nursing unit left to go. And the, the Youth Detention Center, I think, I mean, i- if you look at it, it's one of our hidden gems. Um, we do a lot of great things out of that facility and of course, it's not something that gets a lot of notoriety. But the men and women that work in that facility do so with such pride and they really serve as mentors and role models for some of these youth that come in completely lost. Um, I've, I've seen it firsthand myself and it's, it's really amazing work that goes on behind the walls of, of the youth, youth detention center. Again, I think it's one of those, those hidden gems within our, our Burnley County. So I thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, for pushing us to get that remodel done and helping us to do it. And now seeing that it's come to fruition or really close, it's really exciting. We've gone from a design that was nineteen seventies to something real-time today and it's not as, um, it looked like a, a surgery room, back in the day, very just, just bleak and bland. And now it looks like somewhere that someone could kind of call home away from home to a degree. I mean, it's still a, still a facility, but it's better.
Uh, achieving then that some po- at some point, maybe commissioners could, you know, look at it. I remember, like you said, three years ago, we were at a conference and they were talking about the, the, the new approach, right, to, to serving youth in this, uh, this category and how they really, I mean, that, like you said, everything was gray, looked like a jail, really. And that, you know, it's like more of a living room sort of model sort of idea. So I'm glad to see that it's going. It's been, it's been challenging because of, it's costly, right? I don't know how much the total remodel ended up being and.
I'm not certain. It's been a number, it's been a number, we had a number of cycles to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely get a tour set up for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, thanks.
Yes, and Chief Pettis too, I know you have plenty of departments, so if you don't mind me asking a couple of questions now. The, uh, for the Youth Services Center, um, I know that also, I guess I just also wanna appreciate, um, the remodeling. I know even the name of Youth Services Center has been changed also because there's been community involved in like, um, important reforms almost within this, like that we're not referring to this as a detention center, but as a services center. Like that we're not referring to this as a detention center, but as a services center. Others have suggested even calling it a development center, cause we could think of that, this is sort of the preventive approach. If we can get young people um with some good services and resources, so I'm, I really appreciate, and I think the building. Um remodel has to do with that as well, um would does this, when you say, I was, I feel like I lost a slide that I was gonna ask about. Oh, the be- the behavioral health, I know that cares campus is working to have like a floor or section dedicated. To being um able to house young, specifically young adults. Um but this isn't the young people that are coming up, because our, most of the folks in um Y S C are like under eighteen. In that air bridge or in that bridge area, right, but.
So Madam Chair, Commissioners, so we're trying to do what we can with, with the youth that are at about eighteen years old or older. Um coming out of youth detention center, a majority of the youth that we have at our center range from sixteen to twenty. So that eighteen, eighteen gap, we, we will be able to fill it with a thirty or so that we have in there, they would meet some of that criteria. Um but it's, I think it's in the community in general, that we're looking to try to, to fill that gap for those individuals at eighteen and, and older. We don't have anything yet in place for those, those youth that are younger, there are some private groups out there that do have some, some facilities available. If we want to go into more depth, Margarita's behind me, I, I know she's there, um she could actually tie on to that a little bit more if, if you'd like to. Or we can save that for time with you uh one on one.
Totally, but I did wonder what, um yeah, I can wait on the, I think I understand a little bit what's starting to be talked about at the cares campus. But more, you know, a lot of our behavioral health dollars go into M D C. How, is there a percentage that's going to what, like is there a specific care or behavioral health staff that are?
We have none that I know of right now, and we're, we're trying to do that, and we're trying to, to breach that and get a little bit more introduction in there. Um but we really haven't done much with that yet, I think this is the start of that. And really starting to understand where does, was Department of Behavioral Health and the B H I um intersect with youth detention. Or youth development and how do we, how do we help to bridge some of that, so I think this is the new area that we're looking at now. Um now that we've kind of got all of the other uh services kind of in place, this is one of those areas that is still a gap and I think it's one that we're starting to really start to explore.
Okay, because the, yeah, cause it feels like, yeah, it's interesting that we, right now, are there services at the jail?
Madam Chair, yes, there are services within the youth detention center, we have full case management. Um we have full nursing in there, um as well as a lot of outreach, uh we've got equine therapy that comes in there once a week. Um we've got a lot of team building that happens, I don't know if you've seen the big, the big tall rope challenge course that's out there, um we have. Families come in and do the, the trust exercises with their, with their children that are inside the facility, so we've got a lot of, of outreach type services.
Services, just not necessarily from the behavioral.
Madam Chair, that's correct, just not from behavioral, which we'd like to change and get that more integrated into and try to help increase the level from what we're already doing today.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, uh let's see, so animal care services, we spent quite a bit of time talking on that, they align with two of our larger uh overarching. Uh strategic goals, but we really, really want to develop training and certification programs for fosters and volunteers. That was kind of what we had alluded to, we also talk about um developing a microchip implementation program for field officers. And then opening a, a retail store for adoption type supplies. And then a- any other additional programmings and, and I take to heart what you all mentioned about being able to offer vaccines. Something we definitely want to look at trying to do again, once we kind of get things where they need to be at the animal care facility. Uh behavioral health, they met two of the criteria in the overarching public safety strategic goal. And I'll hit on kind of the two main ones there, there's a lot going on at the care campus under D B H S. But it's really trying to increase the awareness of the resources that are offered currently today. At our care campus, I still think that that is another one of those gems that people don't truly, truly understand. The level of services that are offered at our facility and it's a newly remodeled facility, it's beautiful, if you haven't been in there yet. I would encourage you to get in there and take a look at it, but there are, there are multitude of services that are offered there. Um in the detox realm and it's not just coming in and, and detoxing for twenty four hours in a drunk tank like folks kind of assume. We've got long term services, we've got apartment complexes in the back that can serve for, you know, six months for an individual to fully recover. And get integrated back into, into society, so there are a lot of, a lot of things that we still have to. Get out to the general public about what happens on the care campus and that's one of our goals and initiatives this year is to really get out there. And make folks, help folks understand all of the services that are offered there. Um we also want to really start working on ties from the D B H S back into public safety. Um where, where does it fit in and how can it complement what's happening within the sheriff's department or the fire department, youth detention, those areas and we're starting to really. Understand that with our mobile crisis teams and our C I T teams, but we need to do more and so that's, that's really kind of where our goals are at and always. Keeping that presence at M D C, um that's been challenging, I will be honest, over the last two years to, to really do a good job. Of our A T P program out there due to COVID numbers, but we're energized and ready to really get ourselves back introduced into M D C and really. Start where I think the root of, of issues are, if we can help people when they're in um our custody. Get over that addiction or at least get through the detox and start being able to think with a little bit more clarity. I think that puts us at a better opportunity to actually get them into long term treatment and long term detox, so that's kind of the goals. Established under behavioral health and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, go ahead, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh chief, do you need another department? Uh you know, I'm just gonna tell you, um you have a lot on your plate, uh you do a great job. Um you know, sometimes I feel you may have too much on your plate, chief, but uh. I, I think you do it with a, with a smile and, and you get up every morning and do your best. Uh and you've done a fantastic job, it's not, I don't think any of these departments are lacking in leadership whatsoever, um just worry about you. Right, so uh, you know, I think uh i- i- if it, if it starts to becoming overwhelming, I think you need to speak up because that is a lot. Uh but uh thank you for your dedication to Burnley County, we really appreciate you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, thank you so much and Julie does a great job of keeping tabs on me on the regular and I will be the first one to tell you. When, when enough's enough, but right now I'm enjoying it, I think we're doing a lot of great things, I've got about three years left. Um before I can, I can kind of hang it up, so I'm, I'm on that last, that last downward, downward trend, so. It's exciting and again, I appreciate you, I appreciate the comments and more so I appreciate all of the support that we've gotten from the commission. On the public safety realm since I've been in charge, I, I can't tell you how great that's been and I look forward again to that continuing. A relationship and support, so thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, of course, you know, I always have questions, I, um on this, the behavioral health summary, um these are. These are the priorities, I, and all the other ones, it's sort of been like the priorities. And I think we're gonna get debriefs later, but like how these turn into dollars feel less real to me than the other ones maybe. Um but are, do most, do most of these just answer to like a specifics, like these are part of a strategic plan that. Are the priorities for that area?
So Madam Chair, basically what we had done is sat down with Maria Zunica and her group and we, as public safety. Identified what were our strategic goals as kind of public safety and then each of the departments. Brought their, their goals and objectives forward and tied those into the overarching ones for. Health and public safety, so that's what you see before you and that's why you see the, the tiny little bubbles underneath them, each of them tells you kind of where they. Where or what they tie into on the overarching public safety strategic goal and plan.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Chief or?
Thank you.
Good morning, good, uh Madam Chair, Commissioners, um I'd like to uh welcome you guys, hopefully you're all comfortable. Uh I thought maybe getting a little chilly up there. I would say it's a lot of hot air, but it's all coming from the podium, but I don't want to go that direction. I'm trying to take a lead from, I'm trying to take a lead from Commissioner Casada that I only write funny stuff.
Well, I can just feel like the cold air just coming down one of these vents, that's why I put my jacket on.
I think it kicks on and goes for circulation. Okay, well, I'd like to jump into it. We're the hot air. Uh so this morning, we're gonna do a quick overview uh of, uh of our budget and some of our initiatives. Uh so we'd start off with our revenues, uh as you can see, our total public rev- uh public works revenues are just over eight point two million dollars. Uh with the majority of uh the uh bigger amounts coming from the state through. Either motor vehicle registrations or through the gas tax, uh combined to, those cover just over three million dollars. Uh you'll also see we, we're projecting about three and a half million dollars coming in. Um through franchise fees and what those are, are the right away use agreements. Um that were, were passed a few years ago in ordinance that we're now starting to get completely implemented and executed. Um and you're seeing there uh the new agreements that we have with P N M, with New Mexico Gas, with Central Link. With Comcast as well as a number of smaller uh, smaller uh private utilities and a few. Uh public nonprofit utilities like Sandia Utilities and Intronosa. We also have in there, uh the, after we get through that, the bulk of the rest of our revenues come from. Various fees that we charge either for uh commercial or uh residential private developments as well. As the well and septic fees that uh are charged for residences, they're making either improvements, upgrades or uh changes to their systems. Um and then Fleet and Facilities takes on a, 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 a small amount of revenue tied to either the rebates we get. Back from P N M or gas uh from our utilities, as well as parking for uh some sh- uh some lots we have downtown. Uh you'll also see in their utility revenue line in Fleet and Facilities and that's kind of a wash because what that is is a chargeback. Uh for the utilities that we have in leased buildings. So we'll pay the utilities on that and then backcharge the residents and that's U N M Hospital. Uh First Choice and the Sign Language Academy are a couple of examples of that, next slide. So in general, um the uh payroll and payroll and benefits make up a. Just a little more than forty two percent of our overall budget, uh the remainder of which. Uh and you'll see is heavily in, in the Fleet Facilities Department. Uh as well as a chunk, as, as well as chunks in operations and maintenance and most of what that is, is the general fund. Uh part of the maintenance and upkeep of our buildings, our fleet and our roads. Uh so we do all this uh with uh just over, uh just about two hundred and eighty eight employees. Uh and with that, we are maintaining uh about seven hundred and thirty one miles worth of road. As well as just over a hundred and twenty buildings. And so as we line up ourselves with the strategic plan, uh you'll see we cover uh a few areas in here, uh. Both in the government a- accountability and obviously in the public infrastructure side, but you'll also see that we. We have a big impact in the economic development, in regional economic development and that's one of the things that. You know, we've worked on as, as, you know, Mayling did her exit uh here, she mentioned that. Uh community services, public works and economic development have been trying to work hand in hand to make ourselves ready. And have areas so that we could be that go to agency for economic development here in the region. Um and then on, so as we move on, go ahead and go to the next slide.
Can you explain a little when you say that, that we're ready, does that mean mostly like improving infrastructure?
It's that, what, what it is, is we're working together uh with public works and community services, what we're doing is identifying where we have entitled. Lands and looking to see what uh, what uh infrastructure is already there. And then on the other side, just being clear and straight up with the developers from the beginning, if there isn't infrastructure there, here's what's gonna be required. Um so that there's not that sticker shock when they come in and, you know, their, their realtor may be telling us, yes, this lot's ready to go. It's ready to go because it may have the zoning entitlement, but then they come up and get that sticker shock of two million dollars worth of. Roads, utilities and such, so even if we can't necessarily offset it and if there's some things that we can do and we've made that work in the past. But if not, then we're just upfront, here's, here's that, here's what it's gonna cost for you to get in here. And that also makes a difference because then they're prepared, okay, what do we do and then this is where they look at. What, what incentives can we do through economic development, through P I Ts, through T I Ts, through that, to get that moving? And, and a lot of that is again, just, you know, kind of truth in advertising, if, if you want to say what it is. And, and that's actually made some difference in here. Um so as we look into Fleet and Facilities, um what we've done in there is. We've really tried to do this as well as with um, with our operations and maintenance, what we're looking at is we're looking at. Uh risk based asset management approach to everything and what that basically means is we're looking to be proactive and not reactive. And we're dealing with a lot of aged buildings, um these are systems that are on their last legs. But rather than react to when the HVAC goes down at, you know, West Side Community Center. We kind of know, that's in its last five years, let's start looking, let's start planning. Because what that does is a lot of times if we're proactive, the cost of keeping that system running and then getting in to replace it. Is a lot less than going in and dealing with when it goes down. And the other thing with that is then we're not taking services out of that building, we're not impacting our citizens or our community that's using those buildings. So with that, um what Fleet and Facilities is looking at, even go to the next slide. Is uh we're looking at implementing our sustainability plan, which was a resolution passed by. Passed by the commission and we brought that framework to you guys and, and you guys approved that last year, so we're moving in that, we've uh. We've hired our consultant and we're also uh filling our permanent position that would oversee that sustainability plan for that. And then we're looking to optimize uh both our public buildings and co- uh and uh consolidating. Some of those old buildings and such, you know, and we're doing this, we're, we've offloaded the assessors building. Um we've sold uh four fifteen to Harris, um even though we're still occupying it, this is one of those ones that we're looking to get out as quickly as possible. Uh and but we're trying to reduce that footprint while still utilizing the space that we do have. Moving us here created a lot of that space around there, next slide. Uh in our, our operations and maintenance, uh you can see we hit these three areas, uh next slide. And for there, what we're looking again is we're, we're looking for that uh, that asset management approach, so we're gonna be uh. I- investing and developing a, in a road inventory that gives us actual real conditions from that. We're using technology that's here, um we can go and we can actually get a true uh evaluation of that condition of the roadway. Not, not what we're doing right now, which is kind of a, a instinct with, with our uh, our field operations personnel, which. Have a remarkable gut instinct for what's there, but this will really tell us what condition these roads are in. And from that, we go, get back to, instead of doing worst first approach to our road improvements, we're putting the money where. We can really truly get into a pavement uh preservation system, so where we may spend two hundred thousand dollars on this piece of road. With a small treatment, we get twenty five years out of life out of that one, rather than letting it deteriorate to its worst case and then we're having to spend. Two and a half million a mile just to get that up. Um we're also uh looking to redo, in our solid waste department, we're trying to reduce the write offs that we have through. Better collection, uh helping the, helping the residents with uh income assistance that we have and such like that. So that we can improve that collection but still keep people, you know, uh keep the services to the people. Uh and then we're also looking to increase our participation in both our residential and commercial recycling programs. It is, but solid waste is under operations and maintenance, yeah, next slide. Uh so in technical services, um you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Here, uh as, as you can see, and, and most of you guys have dealt with our technical services department, we really drill into detail. In, in that one, that's why there's a lot more bubbles in there, but I'm gonna keep it at a higher level. So from there, what we're, we're looking in is one of the big things is we're updating and the big initiative that we're completing this year. And we're gonna be implementing is we've taken the last two years and updated our uh, our road and storm drain standards. And what this did is this is kind of, and you, we've heard this with uh some of our other ordinance updates. We're lining those standards up to the practices of what we've been doing here. Um these standards haven't been touched in decades, um to the point where it was a little embarrassing because some of these were actually typewritten. Documents and there's very few of us around to still remember what a typewriter is, so uh. So those will be coming out and with that, you guys, you, you as the V C C will be seeing some uh updates to the ordinance coming in the fall. Uh that are tied to those, but those again are lining things up to be more uh. Friendly for development and such like this, it's not, you know, letting them off the hook, but it's, it's getting the infrastructure that we need. From those when they're coming in and Commissioner Casadas has told us this a number of times with. We gotta make sure when these guys come in, they're putting that infrastructure down when they're impacting us, so that we don't come back. Two years later and have to put in the sidewalks, have to put in those. Two years later and have to put in the sidewalks, have to put in those water utility connections and such. So those those are some of those things that we're doing. So it's clear and again, clear and apparent when these private entities come to us, here's what you're expected to do. We're also gonna continue to uh do as best as we can to leverage our bond funds. For grants, for state funding and such, and one of the things that we've done here over the last three or four years is. We've tried to be the leader in municipal and county governments and if you give us capital outlay, if you give us state grants. We're gonna take that money, we're gonna design it and we're gonna put it in the ground. And to that end of things, we've been extremely successful in getting. Some of those dollars. A perfect example is uh the state two years ago implemented the Transportation Project Fund, which is like a fifty million dollar set aside. At the state government level that puts projects out with the intent to get local governments some extra money in there. And last year. We took ten percent of that statewide. They they're paying for us to upgrade Blake uh Road, which is severely needed. And they also gave us money to design and then with follow up funding, once we do this, to do our ADA improvements on Second Street Northwest. So we're continuing to do that and the reason we're successful in that is because we take the money and we put it in the ground. And then uh on last, and you're hearing this and this is where staffing really comes in, you hear the importance of what we're doing in here. Technical services is where we house some of our 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 obviously our most technical staff, which are the our engineers and our natural uh resource scientists. And those positions are difficult to fill right now. We're competing heavily in both those areas with Sandia. Who just parks a dump truck in front of our employees and takes them from us with money. So. Uh what we've what we've tried to do in here is we've looked to maximize the ones we have. The ones we have, they're dedicated employees. They're here because there's quality of life that we offer here through the county. So what we're looking at is in both for our scientists and engineer positions, we're reclassifying some of those. We're reclassifying them to either be project managers or project coordinators who can handle the non testing technical aspects. Of dealing with these projects and you know, when we're dealing with federal dollars, there's a lot of non technical aspects that are required to get that job delivered and get us reimbursed. For the monies we do have. So that's we've been working with a lot of support and I'd like to thank Bernadette and her staff. Because they've really, they've they seen our problem with that, you know, there and there's only so much we can do with money. On this, so we're looking for other ways and they've been extremely supportive in working with us to try to figure out that long term solution. Uh and with that, I stand for any questions. Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner O'Malley, go ahead.
Thank you. So I I just have a question on the on the competitive. Salaries issue and you men- mentioned you have engineers and and these are uh in demand right now, big time. Because anything related to construction, all that is in demand. What what are what do you find that these, you know, young like engineers in terms of recruitment, what are they looking for? Salary is certainly part of it. What are the other things that are important to them?
It's a generational issue at this point. If we're looking at the at the kinda older ones that are in their career, they're looking for if you know. Especially if we have the para leash, as we like to call it on them, they're looking for some of those better benefits and this is where we compete with. The state and we compete with some of the other local entities around here is we offer better leave. There's a lot of other fringe benefits that we have and again, uh Bernadette did a a real good uh summary for us that we've turned into a recruitment tool. Where she outlined all the benefits that we can offer and this is this is she prepared that for us because we were kind of in this real back and forth negotiation to. Still D O T State Traffic Engineer. And with that outlining, we contribute more to para, uh we offer more in leave. And just a number of other things that are kind of built in, the gym membership with our healthcare, uh onsite. Health clinic, that kinda thing. Uh we were able to sway that and 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 in that case, he had a number in mind, a salary number in mind. But the benefits when the offset, we told him, take, don't look at that bottom line salary, look at your take home. Here's what you can do. And and that showed that even the take home simply from para and cheaper benefits, that brings up the take home for less actual salary. But there's a lot of those other benefits that come in. So we've been able to compete with that. There's nothing we can do with Sandia. That's an outlier. There's. They're just on a whole different plane, but we have shown that we're we're competitive with. We're getting competitive with there and this this uh class and comp is gonna get us uh almost all the way there, if not there, in most positions. But that's where we're seeing with it. The other ones we gotta compete with, it's and we talk about technical and bring up, but. Our construction inspectors and our construction project managers that we're seeing the exact same thing with them that we're seeing with our uh engineers and our scientists. But again, I think the class and comp is gonna help us a lot to get there, but. It's gonna just be ongoing and we're gonna have to keep tabs on it. With the younger ones, uh you brought into that when I said there was a generational issue. They're not looking long term. Those are the ones that we have a harder time cooking with the benefits. Now a few of them are, you know, I think they're getting to some of that age where they've had to hit the doctor, so now more of them are looking at the health benefits, but the retirement. Is not as as much of a draw because most of these are looking at a gig type approach to a job where. Oh yeah, I'll come and work for you for five years and then I'll go over there, or I wanna work for you just for that project and then I'm gonna leave. And it's hard to adjust to that and it's more maybe we do better screening when we're interviewing to see that. We're looking for somebody more long term with a long term approach versus that short term gig mentality, but we're learning as we go along.
I think it's great that you're working with H R too and you know, really analyzing that because that's gonna, you know, put us in a position, you know, really. A better position, I think, um to recruit folks. Uh and then I just wanted to mention, I wanna. Very glad to see that the franchise fees or the right away fees have gotten back up to pretty much the way they were. A few years ago and I know that was a lot of hard work and I do wanna acknowledge our our attorney, our county attorney. Cam Martinez for that. I know that they work pretty hard. I mean, we were back and forth with that, negotiating that that percentage, but it makes a huge difference. That's. Three over three million dollars that goes into public works for maintenance and those.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, we're not the only one to credit for that. Uh D C M, uh Sidia White and her. Real estate team, uh particularly Chris Sanchez in there, has just been superb at. Going through, seeing which ones are outdated, making contact and taking care of a lot of the heavy lifting to get those in place. We benefit from spending, but he does a heavy lifting.
But I mean, but we we were, you know, we had to actually pass an ordinance to get those back on track, you know, so. And that was not easy to do and we were getting sued left and right, but um but fortunately we were able to do that, so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um so Elias, right away, I wanna thank you for your comments about. How planned development and and the importance to the T I Ts and P I Ts and areas when they're gonna start development. You know, I I I think a lot of people don't realize this. That's what those were actually, in my opinion, designed for, right? So um as you know, in the Southwest Mesa where I live, um we're continuing trying to. You know, fix the roads, add sidewalks, drainage and lighting, which should have been put in in the first place, right? So I feel that, you know, through that mechanism that, you know, we already put in, you know, right? So we give them a tax break of up to, you know, well, one of them is was forty percent of what they put in. So we pay in forty percent. But we're paying that forty percent for them to do it right in the first place, instead of coming back and trying to, and it hasn't been easy. Coming back and trying to do it correctly and paying a hundred percent of of the cost. So right now, we're only paying forty percent for them to do it right. When we will be and would be paying a hundred percent of the cost to do it right, which is make sure that the road is wide enough. That it has drainage and sidewalk and lighting. Uh and I wanna thank you publicly also for uh helping me. Uh and 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 working with the city of Albuquerque to put in lighting in these areas where it should have been put in the first place. We we've put a lot in as as people know, I I don't know if you've driven on Ari Nada in a while, but people are like, what? I can see the street. And we're like, yeah, and that should have been done in the first place. And so I think something I also wanna say publicly now is. You know, I am gonna hold our elected officials uh that uh that, you know, are in these districts within my district to. Hey, you gotta help fund these these projects, right? Um we get people, we have elected officials who complain and we get letters saying. Where there's no ri- there's no lighting here, there's no lighting there. What are you guys doing? Come, you're not doing your job. And then we look at what they allocated through their money that they got from the state and they gave me zero money for lighting. They gave me zero money. For road improvements. And I'm wondering, what are they complaining about? Uh because they're not helping in any way. I'm gonna I'm gonna start holding them accountable, Elias, because, you know, I know that you need the money to help me get these things done. But I think the mechanism that we have in place now and the support I've had from this commission and from staff. That from here on out, as you develop going south in my district, that you're gonna have to do it right from here on out. So we don't have to come back, you know, every, you know, five years and beg for money to have to do it right. So I wanted to make those points, uh since we were on that subject. I wasn't gonna do that here publicly, but since you brought up those points and there's one in the bubble. I'm I'm gonna go with the bubble and say thank you uh for putting that bubble in and that it's really important that from here on out. That we do it right and that we're actually being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, not the opposite. You know, we're not wasting taxpayers' dollars to redo things that should have been done right in the first place. So thanks for all your work. I appreciate you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, uh Commissioner Casada and to to all commissioners, to Commissioner Casada's point in this one. The public work staff makes ourselves available, all three of our directors, you know, we've worked with Alvin, Brian, Antonio and Jared. We make ourselves available to to all the legislators in your districts. It's their preparing for this to say, you know, we reach out. What are you gonna be asking for? We work out those estimates. We provide them because one of the biggest complaints and we heard it in op eds. Over the last two weeks after the legislative session is we don't get enough to build what you want us to build. So we go in there, we'll prepare the estimates, we prepare them based on our on call contracts that are in place. So these are real numbers that we can work with. In there and we provide them those numbers and say, if this is what you want done, this is what it's gonna cost and that goes to the commissioner's point in there when we may ask him for. Three hundred thousand dollars and they give us fifty thousand and then they're and they're like, okay, go do what it is. Well, what that means for us is it gets back to again, what the commissioner's saying. Then you're asking us to kick in two hundred and fifty thousand of our bonds, which are already stretched to the limit to come in and match that. So to do that again, to be the to be that leader, to be that example on the state level, come to us, we'll tell you what it costs. And if you give it to us, we'll build it.
I also to set priorities, right? Like how do they, are you, you're available for them to set priorities because y'all have a bigger view of. What's sort of ready to go next.
Madam Chair, that is correct and we can tell them, here's, you may be asking for this, but here's where we're getting calls in your area. You may want Road A, but you know, Road B, we're getting called on that every day. Commissioners offices are getting called on that every day. That's where we try to, you know.
And 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 just to follow up, Madam Chair, that that now you could actually look, now they have to disclose where they put their money and before in the past. They didn't have to disclose where they got their money, where they put their money. You know, let's show up to places and say, hey, we put money in this project and I'm like. Well, I hope you did because I can't prove that. I'm taking you at at your word. And now it's actually they have to disclose where they put the money, because it's really hard for us to do our job. If they're not combining uh together their resources within the district that was that elected them. To represent that district, to put the money in in the district and you will find, and surprisingly enough. You will find they don't put their money in the district that they're elected to serve. It's pretty eye opening. And uh we're gonna keep putting that out in the public from here on out because we want people to represent, run for office in a district where they live. To represent the district. That is one of my arguments was the last time when we were talking about, you know, um. You know, do we represent our district? Yes, we do. But do we fight for the area that we live in? I think we fight a little bit more for the area that we live in, but yet we do represent our own district, but we fight harder for where we live. And that's just a reality for, I think, for all of us. Uh and so it's really important that at the state level, they put the money in for us. So if we do need to do stuff in uh outside of where we live, within the district that we represent. That it's there, that that we can get, that we can start working and getting the job done. Clay did an amazing job of making sure that. That, you know, that our priorities were there, but at the end of the day. You know, they don't promise Clay any money and when they don't give him any money, he's gotta start working on next year. Uh that's that's his job. He doesn't, he can't do any. Any more than that. I think it's our job up here is to start calling them out for where they're putting their money and because we represent those districts. We represent those constituents. And so uh I just wanted to say that now as public, you can look at in your district. What your elected officials are putting in and how much money they're putting in your district and you can also hold them accountable. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Elias. I had a couple of questions, again, just mostly for my education. Under the fleet and so when we talk fleet and facilities, again, mostly for my education. I I see that um like lots of different departments have fleets and um facilities, like the sheriffs does. So is this like all fleets and facilities or just fleets and facilities that fall into your department?
Madam Chair, uh this is all, we we handle the fleet for the entire, so we actually have set aside allocations for sheriff's officers fleet. For uh fire uh fleet. So there's there's specific amounts to go through there, through bonds and through some other sources. But we are responsible for maintaining all the vehicles, uh heavy, everything from the motor pool to the sheriff's officers. Patrol units to specialty vehicles to fire apparatus as well as all the heavy equipment that public works and uh Parks and Rec also use.
So even the community centers.
Yes, yeah. And that's in that hundred and twenty uh buildings that we maintain. That includes all community centers, even charters, leases, that kinda thing.
Okay, that's huge. Thank you. And then um for tech, I guess for all of these, I'm. I know that you all did make these slides, but I love seeing them against a strategic plan and I guess I wonder how they. Like how does this turn into dollars? I think for all of these, so not just specifically for yours. And then I noticed that we don't um. We're not hearing about solid waste under this. Is it because we're hearing somewhere else or?
Madam Chair, no, solid waste is here, uh and it's under operations and maintenance. So under the um.
Yeah, but we didn't go over those slides. I don't know if it was just because we're trying to be.
We did. They were just kinda rolled into the overall operations and maintenance. So as we spoke about the initiative for um. Reducing write offs for solid waste, that's that's where we're focusing in the upcoming year is to try to help with that income assistance to get. As much of these people caught up on their bills as possible.
On the solid.
On the wa- solid waste side. So that is in our residential collection side of solid waste. We also have the East Mountain Transfer Station, which is. Is 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 our our one uh transfer facility.
Okay, but not so, but I I don't in under the either of the the summary that shows the money. It just has like lines under infrastructure and solid waste doesn't show.
That's uh that is because their um their budget is rolled into operations and maintenance. Uh and there are uh there's two portions and where you you might be able to see that breakdown a little better is in the positions. Slide. Uh you'll see that uh we have a solid waste fund. Under s- uh the solid waste funded, fund funded positions, there's five of those that sit in. In operations and maintenance and that makes up our um our kinda collections and account management. Uh side of operations and maintenance. And then the second one, which is funded out of the environmental G R T. There's uh seven positions there and those are the staff at the East Mouse Mountain Transfer Station.
Okay, so those are the staff for the solid waste, but not like the this, obviously it's more than five staff for like all the.
So that's handled under a contract with Waste Management.
Waste.
Yes.
And where is that contract in this budget represented? Is it a different department?
Antonio, our operations and maintenance director.
Sorry, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Um so we have a separate um contract with Waste Management and it's a uh it's it's a contract that uh we have. To do residential pickup services. Um so it's it's a it's a separate fund. We're only um doing uh or. Doing the uh overall for general fund. It's a it's a it's a different type of fund. It's a it's a uh enterprise fund, I'm sorry. So that's why it's not reflective here.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. I think that's all I have. Any other questions for Elias and Public Works? Thank you and your team for all the work you do year round.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I think it's still morning. We've got fifteen minutes left. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I think it's still morning. We've got fifteen minutes left. So I'll try to be brief. I know we're kind of closing in on time, but, um, this first slide, um, so. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Community Services Division. There's a number of departments and some other sections within the division. That cover a lot of some of the other things that haven't been mentioned thus far this morning. So, um, the first slide kind of touches on the overall, um, revenues. Um, the division is made up of housing, planning and development services, the county clerk's office is in there. Um, probate court and so on, but nonetheless, we do still have some revenues primarily made up of fees that come in from the county clerk's office. Planning and development services, parks and recreation and so on. Uh, next slide. Um, and this next slide just covers some of the different expenditures, uh, that we have sprinkled out throughout the division. Um, parks and recreation, P D S, uh, courts of wills trust, um, and so on. So, um, this is a, a pretty good snapshot of the overall expenditures, um, that we anticipate. And that we have endured, uh, over the last year or so. Um, next slide. And ask, you, I'm just kind of trying to move through it because there's a bit of material I want to cover, but if you have any questions, certainly stop me. Um, the, this is essentially our, um, positions and it deals with all of the, uh, positions within the different kinds of sections. And departments within, um, the Community Services doesn't have as many diversified union positions as, uh, Public Safety. But we do encompass both blue collar, white collar and rules and regs positions, uh, depending on the department. Uh, and depending on the, um, the section. So, within Community Services, it's a fairly, fairly broad scope of services, uh, to the county. We touch on everything pretty much except Public Safety, uh, directly. There's an economic development kind of component. Um, as Elias mentioned earlier, we work very closely with both with Marcos and Mayling, with Public Works. And with the land use and planning section to ensure that we're having a very kind of collateral, consistent approach to providing areas for economic development. Uh, and creating transparency around that process. Um, I think that in the last fifteen or twenty years, we've come a very long way, uh, in creating opportunities and zones. And areas of priority for economic development within the county, something that really didn't, really didn't exist to a large extent, uh, twenty years ago or so. When I started. So that's kind of a collaborative process and I think in recent years, we've seen that that's worked out pretty well overall for the economic vitality and growth of the county.
Regional economic development part that you're talking about, thank you, sorry. Um, that, in your view and your department, that's the zoning. It like sort of in that same.
That's correct. That's correct. And, and the zoning is really kind of just a, a micro portion of planning and development services. There is a long-range planning crew, uh, that does a lot of long-range planning, kind of anticipating growth trends. Areas where infrastructure should be provided, trying to create more compact, consistent, integrated growth. And kind of, yeah, take advantage of both infill opportunities within the county. Uh, and opportunities for new development that is larger in scale, like industrial parks, uh, office warehousing, distribution. Uh, and they capitalize on kind of planned growth, really, kind of concentrate on centers, corridors and areas where we feel that. Both infrastructure, uh, both, you know, physical infrastructure and human infrastructure are in place. I think Commissioner Casada touched on that earlier. There was a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done to make sure that services and commercial services are now kind of backfilled. In areas where in the few, in the past, you know, maybe a lot of rooftops appeared, but without a lot of thought around, you know, where am I gonna go get a loaf of bread? And a gallon of milk and so on. So those are the kind of things we're really striving to knit together. And it's, uh, been a nice collaboration with Public Works and Economic Development. So that's kind of what I was touching on.
Thank you, thanks.
Uh, in addition to that, our departments cover both, you know. You know, communications, uh, community engagement, offices senior and social services, uh, and housing. So we kind of cover a pretty broad spectrum of services, um, within the county. Um, next slide, Community Services, uh, summary. This kind of just goes through and kind of, uh, illustrates some of the things that, um, the, the overall department touches on, uh, as a division. And within the division, there's a lot of overlap between the different groups and within the different directors and managers, um, to kind of achieve these goals. So for example, you know, uh, community events, uh, that's something that is kind of encompasses not only the Community Services Division. But also folks within other departments, uh, and divisions to assist us with those goals. Um, we can go ahead and go forward. This is my first experience with the bubbles, so. So, uh, it's been very helpful, but I, I'm just gonna highlight some of those things, uh, within our summary. And, uh, really the, one of the key goals for the division is, uh, community engagement and community services. And trying to promote those to all levels of the community, whether it's through Parks and Rec, open space. And some of their programming, both on the community center level, uh, and the park level. Um, and also, you know, within, uh, communication services directly. We all know that, uh, Tia Bland and her group assist all of us daily, uh, on either, you know, advising us on certain types of issues. Creating press releases and responding to different kinds of either media inquiries or trying to get information out to the community regarding our different initiatives. So with regards to our future plans for that department, it's really just to continue that type of work and ensure that we have. And I think we have at this point, a very, very competent, talented group of folks within her shop that really have been able to help us along in recent years. Um, next slide, um, we can go straight to the bubbles. I like the bubbles. So, uh, then that is here. I think everybody here has at least served a stint on the A B C Community School Board. Um, and, you know, let me just say this, I think in twenty twenty, there was about thirty-nine or so, uh, community schools. That has jumped up to about fifty-seven in twenty twenty-two. And that's kind of a testament to the work that Danette and her team has given. Over the years. And A B C Community Schools just does a wonderful job with those wraparound services around, you know, the community schools. And I think that, you know, ha- having a bunch of former board, you know, several former board members here, uh, you can kind of, uh, a testament. It's a testament to that work. And so we hopefully can continue to both staff and support community schools moving into the future. Um, they have different initiatives and I think they have opportunities to kind of strengthen that bond and that communication and that work with, with P E D and so on. And A P S, so, um, wanna move forward to the next slide. Oh, you went straight to the bubbles, thank you. So the Office of Senior and Social Services, um, George Schroeder coordinates that group and he's the manager. And so, you know, this is a group, uh, that is, is a relatively new section for the county. And I think that, and when I say relatively, I just mean within the last, you know, five years or so. Uh, they've done a really wonderful job, both in, uh, their expertise around securing grants and funding streams for senior services. Social services, uh, they're now moving back into place since we're out of COVID, at least for now, with kind of face-to-face interactions with seniors. Distribution of monies coming in from, um, from the state, uh, and from the triple A, actually from the state. And actually providing all types of different programs. Uh, recently, they've done a, a really good program dealing with financial literacy for, for seniors. Uh, to really educate them on the rampant kind of influx of scams, uh, that they're experiencing, uh, throughout the county and throughout the city. And throughout the state. Uh, there's a lot of great programming around sports and fitness and tai chi and yoga and so on. So, uh, that's one of the other sections in the, in the Community Services. Uh, and we are kind of constantly in the position of trying to strengthen that office and ensure that we have good succession moving into the future. Uh, with that group of folks. Um, they, you know, their work during COVID, uh, along with A B C Community Schools. In providing, you know, um, food distribution, uh, school lunches and so on. I think A B C and, uh, uh, O S S, as we call it for the Office of Senior Social Services, has done a phenomenal job getting food out. Uh, and those linkages out to the community. Uh, next slide.
Because you have so many, can I just real quickly ask, when you say five years, is that big, it's a new program to the county?
Well, it's interesting and, uh, George can kind of give you a little bit more of a, of a background. But it's evolved, uh, out of the different kind of social service, uh, activities within the Community Services Department. So I think, uh, on its own, with a dedicated manager, it's been, you know, four, five, six years. But, um, those are also, that, that's not to say that work wasn't being done in the past. It was just housed in different areas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Office of Community Engagement and Outreach. So, uh, when we're talking about this office, we're talking about Movies in the Park. Uh, South Valley Pride, uh, West Coast Chili Fest, we're talking about all of those different kind of events. And, uh, social media work that this group does. Um, we have, um, been working very hard in the past to try to make sure that they have adequate staffing and that staffing is dedicated. We continue to work on that and there's some things in this budget that I think are gonna strengthen this group's opportunity to be more viable and more, um, effective. Over the long run. So we put a couple of items in the budget to help them with their overall replenishment of supplies and logistics stuff. Uh, stuffs and also to ensure that we're able to make, uh, have proper staffing, uh, in this office. It's one of those offices that has really kind of like evolved over time. They've got some very big signature events. Uh, we also really have, uh, done, I think, an outstanding job with the, um, cap, um, one percent for the arts, which falls also within this group. Um, and that's kind of gonna be even more apparent in the coming months or when we get to see the mural as you mentioned, this building. Uh, into the commission chambers. So those are all of the kind of elements that fall within the Office of Community Outreach. Um, and, uh, it's been just a, you know, over COVID, they've done amazing things virtually. Uh, I think the, uh, movies at, uh, Mesa del Sol with the socially-distanced cars. And opportunities for folks to get out of the house and out of quarantine and into some opportu- uh, an opportunity to kind of, uh, enjoy a kind of a family event. Uh, in a safe manner was, was very helpful. So those, those are the types of things that we're gonna continue to, uh, concentrate on with the virg- with the budget. Hopefully, uh, if it is approved in the future. Um, next, we've got, oh, straight to the bubbles for parks, recreation and open space. Um, some of the things we're doing now, just to briefly, kind of high level. Certainly, we're opening up to full-face engagement with the community centers and that programming, swimming pools. Um, all of the programming, uh, camps and so on are gonna hopefully continue without any interruption, um, this time around. Um, one of the things I want to talk about a little bit is that we have a number of projects, uh, identified for, um, development. And, you know, community centers, um, Raymond G. Community Center, West Side Community Center are getting some money pumped into them. For, like, establish, uh, expanding, uh, Mesa del Sol and so on. But we've taken on Debbie Jo and John Barney and so on, have really kind of had a challenge, as is everybody with the, not only the rise in construction costs. But the fluctuation in labor and costs. So we're really trying to concentrate on what we can do. We're gonna call it horizontal construction, which means fields, uh, ballfields, turf fields, uh, work around swimming pools and so on at Raymond G. Because when we get into vertical construction, it's kind of been frustrating because not only are the prices really high, given the money that we have. But the fluctuation in those costs is, is also a challenge. So those are some of the strategies we're gonna be looking forward to employing moving forward. Uh, next slide. Last but not least, housing. And, uh, Betty is here in case I have any questions. Um, lots of stuff going on in housing. This is a department, in two thousand nine, they had a, a housing budget of about fourteen million dollars. It's twenty twenty-two. They've got about thirty-two million dollars and they do it with about one or two more staff people that they had back in two thousand nine. So, um, I, I think that, you know, uh, without, you know, Section Eight, Vash vouchers, uh, our project going on. On, uh, colon, uh, lead, I believe. All of those things are big initiatives that housing has taken on. They're all moving forward now. Moving out of the pandemic and into, uh, hopefully more normal times will be able to accelerate some of those projects. There are some things in the budget to help assist housing, uh, in terms of staffing and operations, uh, primarily staffing. So that we can kind of, um, build, start to build that department and kind of create a, a middle layer, if you will, of management. To help carry out some of these larger tasks. And, uh, Betty is of course here if you have any additional questions. But that is a, a very, very important and a very prominent department in Community Services that, uh, I think has really played a large role. In a lot of the programs over the, uh, the pandemic.
I did wanna take a, yeah, oh, go ahead, um.
I don't know what the button is so hard to push, probably because a person could get in trouble. Um, so I wanted an update on the, I know that the, the, what is it, site supportive housing project. I know it's been in the works for some time. I imagine the cost gone up in terms of construction. I know you hear Betty and I was just wanting an update on it.
I'll give you a little bit of update of the items I know. Betty's here, she can probably give you some specifics. Um, I know that we're back at reviewing plan documents, uh, and we're looking at, um, the, the property itself. We've closed. Uh, we're in the, uh, we're in the phase of looking at kind of construction documents, design and making adjustments for some of the rising costs. And materials and, you know, making some adjustments, probably, uh, it will diminish some of the overall units. Um, but it wasn't as scant as, as I anticipated. Betty, did you have any, there she is. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Yeah.
Okay, Chair, Commissioner, um, we, we, we actually, surprisingly, we, we put pen, pen to paper. And we're about a million dollars short. So it's not drastically, uh, as short as we thought it was going to be. We are going to use an on-call architect, so we should be kicking off the project within ninety days. So we're very, very close to putting shovel in the ground.
Okay. Uh, and primarily, this particular project will serve what, who will it serve?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. Uh, I have a call I have to get. I'm sorry, I was wondering who it was gonna serve, but I do have to get off for a minute. Emergency call.
Okay, that's okay.
I think what she is asking was, um, whether the, like, who that property was gonna serve. I, I'm assuming it's affordable, how, I had to just marked affordable housing.
So the, the, the units will be serving, uh, mentally ill and homeless. And they will be a mix of veterans and, uh, just public members.
Oh, thank you. Thanks so much for that. I had a, a little bit, I think, Betty, for you, just a quick, what, um, the, under here, under the bubbles, I see that create virtual online. And then also the additional rental assistance funding. I know in both those cases where we have had rental assistance funding, it's been sometimes hard to get out the door. Maybe because of whatever qualifications and/or because sometimes we've, or at least I believe I heard from you, right? That landlords are maybe not wanting to take it, or I know we did that increase into the hundred and twenty percent. But is there both capacity and thought around how we're building relationships with landlords to maybe increase that? Money getting out the door and getting people housed or?
Uh, Chair Barbo, so, uh, our challenge has been, i- it's community-wide and actually it's nationwide challenge right now. Uh, landlords are, i- it's the rents that are the challenge right now. Their, their programs are not meeting the rents the landlords are asking for. We fortunately have had a great relationship with our landlords and we continue to maintain that. Our programs are at capacity, unfortunately. So we've never had, um. The c- capacity challenge. We are always needing more money. So all of our programs are at capacity right now. We have thirty-three programs and all of them are at capacity, unfortunately. Um, we want more money. Um, it is, um, D C M and Rico said, we started with four programs and we're now at thirty-three programs. So, uh, we've maintained a good relationship with our landlords and we continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
Okay, uh, last slide, if you wanna skip over to the bubble part of, uh, Planning and Development Services. So just to kind of circle back, I think the question came up a little bit earlier. Uh, Planning and Development Services, some of the key, um, initiatives and kind of, um, uh, goals. Uh, uh, recently have been, number one, we, uh, the, as a result of the Burnley County Charter being adopted several years ago. We were able to adopt a nuisance abatement ordinance, uh, in Burnley County, which serves all of Burnley County. Uh, and Director Devoya and his staff was, have been able to put together a process that involves a hearing officer. Uh, involves a nuisance abatement officer and all of the moving parts to really move forward on some of these nuisance properties. That were very difficult to tackle, but were. With our new process in place and thanks to the commission and the voters for allowing that in the charter, we're able to address these much quicker, a matter of months rather than years. And that's made a big impact in the community. We have nuisance properties in every district of the county except for three. The city does have their own ordinance, but this is relatively new, so they're moving very quickly and you'll see these items both on the consent agenda and possibly under a hearing item, but most of these are designed to get at those properties that are dangerous unsightly, danger to the public, but in most cases, we can't find an owner. It's in probate limbo, it's in foreclosure limbo, and so that's kind of the, one of the big priorities over the last two years. So, you know, those properties, we can also place liens on and get our money back, hopefully in the near future, to then reinvest that money and kind of address more dilapidated properties. And then one of the other things that's been on the forefront in the last couple of years, year and a half, has been online permitting, just to allow the public to come in and secure certain types of permits for construction, for development, online rather than have to visit the building every time someone wants to change out a water heater or, you know, upgrade a service panel. So those are some of the highlights there. You know, we don't, we'll still need staffing, someone still needs to process those permits, they'll just come in online as opposed to people having to build, visit the building. And we certainly have plenty of members of the public and contractors that still like to come in the building and talk to people, but more and more, we do have folks utilizing our online capabilities and that speaks a little bit to what Madam Treasurer was discussing with that point of service software. So kind, I know I've moved kind of fast, but if you have any questions or I stand for them.
I think I do. Any other questions for Enrico and his multiple departments?
There we go. Yeah, I do want to talk a little bit about the, I guess it's Parks and Recs Department regarding the, so this is, let me just couch this, this question because I know that at one point, we looked at fees for sports and I know that there was an ordinance in the past and I regret that I actually didn't look at it very closely and actually voted in support of it because especially now with families at risk more than ever and the increased levels of poverty that we're seeing, that I want to make sure that we have, or if we need to change something, when it comes to fees for sports for, for families, that they're either not charged anything, especially if they are low to moderate income, that we really look at that program again because, you know, these kids, if they don't have anything, they'll find something to do. And a lot of times, it's not good. It's better that they're in sports, playing some sports or anything like that. I know those fees increased and, but I want, I want us to look at them again and I don't think we should be charging these young kids these fees for them to get into sports. They have really no other options.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I know we had that conversation maybe three months ago, two or three months ago. I did bring that up to Director Almaguer, we should have something to present to you and basically just give you a rundown of what we are doing, what we're not doing, what we've done in the past and some of the options that we can kind of employ moving forward along, not just sports, but, you know, some of the programming.
Right, and community centers, all these things that, you know, these children have no, they don't have anything to say about their financial status, what their parents spend money on, nothing. So we, you know, to say, oh, well, you know, their parents this or their parents that, they have no control over that, but they need to have these, these services or else they are going to get in trouble. And it's either from, all the way from free lunch to, we do that in the parks. There's a lot of kids that have no choice. They have to, they depend on that meal. And, and then sports too, right, for them to get into basketball or whatever. It should not be a hardship. And again, they don't have any control. If their parents decide to spend 20 bucks on something else, they don't have any control. So that's why I really want us to look at this. I don't want kids to be left out of that. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, thank you for following up on that particular item.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I also believe that, you know, when they showed all, all the, where it falls under and, and where, where you said you weren't part of public safety, you are, because we can keep kids occupied and keep kids, you know, engaged, that really goes into public safety. I know not, not, you know, per se, you, you're under that, but I, but, you know, I mean, I, I did gang intervention counseling for a long time. I did a bunch of programs for gang intervention. If those programs weren't there, you know, I knew what those kids were going to go do. And I didn't have the little kids, I had, you know, the, the high school kids. And so the more we can occupy them, the more we can give them opportunities, the better public safety is going to be for the future of the community. So I think you do kind of have that responsibility and I think you should fill in that bubble next time you do it because, you know, you, you do. The services that you provide at a high le, and it's a high level, it really is. I, I'm going to say that, you know, we're not here complaining about what you're doing because you're doing great. We just worry about, you know, people not being able to afford it and kids going the other direction, right? And that, I think that's the point that Commissioner O'Malley is trying to make is, you know, it's, it's about the money, yes, but our, our bigger job is to keep the kids occupied. So if there's something we can do even to help that, Debbie Jo, you know, if there's, if I, even if I have to dip into my funding, I, I would be willing to do that if you can't, if you don't have the capacity at this time, because I want to make sure that that is free for kids, you know? We could discuss other services for seniors and whatever, but kids at the, at this point, you know, that's definitely a public safety issue and that we would, I, I know I, I would be willing to kick in some, you know, for my district, just to make sure that that 20 bucks or 15 bucks is, is covered, right? So just throwing that out there.
Sure. So Madam Chair, Commissioners Casada, O'Malley, so those are some things that we can bring back to you pretty quickly. I agree with you. When, I don't know if it's anecdotal or if there's actually some data to support it, I believe there is. Three-on-three basketball, when that came into play several years back, we definitely saw an impact in terms of the types of petty things that were occurring in that community. There's no question. That's free right now, that's something we do. But we can kind of drill down and touch on some of the other programs and some of the other ways and that we can continue to offer these programmings. For us, it's really just to make sure that we're able to create an opportunity for those that sign up, can actually show up and then participate. So that's something we can kind of get back to you on in the very short term, if you'd like.
Thank you. And I wanted to just add to that. I went to, I think, two of the U Sports Commission meetings and they actually were doing a survey and they had done this whole big, like, almost research project on what it meant when they, once they increase, like, the fees came back. I do also, my kids, I'm a single mom, so my kids, I would, if it was only 20 bucks, I'd be one thing, usually you have to pay for equipment and gear and, so it's not just 20 bucks and, you know, our, yes, our kids and families rely on it, so definitely behind that. And the other sort of section around maintenance for parks and open space work, I guess I, right, some of the, so the, the North Course Campus, which is not county land, but the trail around it has been what we've been supporting, right? But this, but it really opened my eyes to hear a lot of community members there, like, you know, how much they appreciate the lush green grass and they want, you know, and that's a, that's a golf course, not a park. But I do think about, like, yeah, my, I have a park behind my house and it's not lush green grass or the maintenance that, right now, like in my neighborhood, there's a school that uses the, like a charter school that uses the park for, so I guess I just wonder as far as, like, I had almost thought with that thing, we're working on that bond issue, right? Like, how are we reevaluating the needs of our parks so that they are the spaces that we want to maintain them? I, I don't think right now, you know, maybe we're, we need more capacity as far as, like, yeah, just the cleanup and the maintenance and, you know, right now, I think most of our needle exchange program runs on like a one-person staff and, you know, that, those mean a lot when our kids are going into, so, yes, I want them to have lush green grass and no needles. So I don't know what the needed, how we increase that. I think it's just more staff, right, I guess.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, so it's, it's complicated, right? There's a number of things going on with that. Those facilities that are in the incorporated city of Albuquerque, certainly we have limited kind of impact.
Even if we talk unincorporated, I really didn't have that conversation.
But we're entering a time, and this is again, kind of a collaboration with parks and public works, where, you know, as you know, the county does not use things like glyphosate anymore to combat, you know, weeds and noxious and invasive species. So we're really looking at creating opportunities to get the right types of plants, the right kinds of trees, the right kinds of shrubs in place, that really needs a lot of kind of intensive care for the first few years and then they kind of take off and they can hold their own. That creates an opportunity where we can dedicate more staff to those kind of green spaces that need a little bit more attention, right? So it's kind of a, a new area that we're, a new area we're forging into to really think hard about what are the appropriate kinds of plant materials to be using? What are the areas that are really needing to be manicured, like ball fields, right? Tournament kind of areas and so on? Because we can't, you know, with this new ordinance, it's been a good thing and it's really made us think creatively about how to, and I think it was the right thing to do, but it's really made us think creatively about how to kind of maintain our, our facilities with optimum, you know, impact to the community without having to constantly hire. And we can certainly always use additional land management, there's no question about that, but it's, it's more than that, right? And so we should be coming back to the commission with a report from one of our contractors that is going to give us some recommendations on moving forward. And this is trails, this is medians, this is a lot of different things, not just the parks. So that's something that's kind of in the works, was kind of delayed during COVID, but we look forward to bringing that back relatively soon.
Okay. Thank you. And also thank you to, oh, wow, I had one more question around communications. I didn't realize communication services is under your department.
It's, I signed the timesheets and the staff, but they really serve everybody directly, correct?
So I did have questions about, I thought, I guess, and you're in, so I could be completely wrong, but I thought we were doing a revamp of the, like, website, but then, so I guess I, I don't know, is that, and I see on this communication services summary, the expand, you know, more online platforms to engage constituents and the Burnco TV.
That's correct. So under that, and we didn't really talk about Burnco TV, but you're all very familiar with Paul Evans' work, and I think Paul has some initiatives and some ideas. Both, there's some staffing that he was approved for, that he's trying to get on board to assist him, so that Paul and his higher-level staff can do what they do, which is all of the video work, the videography and all of the communications work, and allow them to have some admin staff to be able to work and kind of create and keep that business going while Paul, so Paul doesn't have to take a break doing things that he's really not specialized in doing. So in addition to that, we're also kind of, I didn't want to, I'm just going to bring it up, we're almost kind of in the initial stages of finishing up some of the branding work that's probably going to allow us to then get in and think about the website. And we have done one update to the website, which was to kind of simplify and use analytics to detail what are the most common searches for the website and then provide those to the public, which I thought worked out pretty well. But there'll be other phases as we kind of have the new colors and the new, and those are all things to think about with the brand, right? The colors that are appropriate for the website and those that are appropriate for rent and those that are appropriate for vehicles and so on. But that is underway as well and you should be getting some kind of update relatively soon on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Perry and Enrico? Well, thank you. Oh, it was already on.
Madam Chair, just want to mention something, and I appreciate that you're, that you have really sort of been on this, Enrico, and that is, you know, we have the cities in sort of intense zone, which is the IDO, and then we have, of course, the unincorporated areas, but it, it just, I'm just really encouraged by the flexibility that, that occurs in the, in the unincorporated areas in terms of development, being able to, for example, do more in terms of affordable housing, smaller units, that sort of thing. I just wanted to thank you for keeping your eye on that because obviously there's a huge need for, for housing and that's one of the hardest things to get built, is affordable housing.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I'm glad that you appreciate that. I think our Planning and Development Services Department, our zoning administrator, has a set of initiatives that we'll be bringing forward this in the next few months regarding additional opportunities for individuals, not multifamily, not, you know, necessarily housing projects, but individuals to do additional things on their property in certain areas, which is really important because that's opportunities for the extended family and so on. So it's kind of a, how shall I say, it's a tradition in the county, it's nothing new, but it's something that I think is important since these are infill areas, infrastructure is there, you know, they're getting trash pickup, they have sewer service, these are opportunities that can be expanded. So look forward to that in the coming months.
All right. Thank you so much and thank you to your team and staff for all the work and getting this ready and year-round.
Thank you for your time.
Great. I think we're going to break for about 30 minutes. So if we could come back for general services, we're going to break for 30 minutes, that'll bring us back at around 12:45. Thank you. Great. Okay, welcome back. Thank you for that short break. Hopefully everybody got refreshed. And I believe we're hearing next from General Services, General Services. Thank you for your patience, I saw you ready last time.
Oh, yeah, we're ready. We're always ready.
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, elected offices and county executive staff, thank you in advance for your time. I'm Carl Broach, I proudly serve as the Director for Constituent and Support Services and I'm here to speak to you today on General Services on behalf of our beloved DCM Lisa Sadio White, who could not make it today. So what you have in General Services, and it's such a out-there term, you don't really understand what that means, so I'd like to provide at least a brief synopsis on what General Services does for the county, so that you get that understanding. We have three departments, one section and one program under General Services. Those departments include Procurement and Business Services, which handles procurement and accounts payable for the entire county. You have Risk Management Department, which does risk and also does records management for the entire county. You have Constituent and Support Services, which is my place, and we have our hands in a little bit of everything. So the customer service desk that you see downstairs, that help all constituents, the business center, the contact center that helps constituents over the phone, the inventory warehouses throughout the county, the printing and graphics team, and the Continuous Improvement Initiative under Pathway to Excellence that we do in the county is all under Constituent and Support Services. We then have as a section, the real estate, which handles real estate for, throughout the county. And then lastly, the one program is the Indigent and Cremation Services. So we do handle quite a bit for the county. We're pretty small, but we're pretty mighty. If we look at this slide here, you're seeing that we have a revenue income of about 100, just under $175,000. And where it says clerk's total, I was just made aware that that was a typo and that should say risk, but I would like to thank the clerk for her contribution in advance and we'll, we'll be looking for the check soon. It is in the mail, so thank you for that. If we can go to the next slide. And we have our hands in a little bit of everything. So the customer service desk that you see downstairs, that help all constituents. The Business Center, the Contact Center that helps constituents over the phone. The inventory warehouses throughout the county, the Printing and Graphics Team. And the Continuous Improvement Initiative under Pathway to Excellence that we do in the county is all under Constituent and Support Services. We then have, as a section, the Real Estate, which handles real estate for throughout the county. And then lastly, the one program is the Indigent and Cremation Services. So we do handle quite a bit for the county. We're pretty small, but we're pretty mighty. Uh, if we look at this slide here, you're seeing that we have a revenue income of about a hundred and, just under a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And where it says Clerk's Total, I was just made aware that that was a typo. And that should say Risk, uh, but I would like to thank the clerk for her contribution in advance. And we'll we'll be looking for the check soon. It is in the mail. So thank you for that. If we can go to the next slide. Yeah. So General Services has um about just over eleven million in expenditures. And like everyone else, a lion's share of that is salaries. Uh, next slide. When I said small but mighty, um, you heard from Public Safety earlier that there are just over a thousand people. We are eighty-three people strong, and we do handle a whole lot for the county, both internal and external services. Next slide. All right. When looking at where General Services fits in the strategic goals, we are about four out of the five. Uh, much like Community Services, we sit in four out of the five general areas, but we have a strong propensity for government accountability. Uh, next bubble slide. Oh, so we're looking at just how they break through. So this is Procurement and Business. What you'll see throughout our bubbles, our buckets or whatever we wanna call them, balloons, um, is that we're looking at continuous improvement as a as an initiative. We're looking for efficiencies and maximizing efficiencies at this time throughout General Services Department. So if you see things like uh update wireless forms, uh, new travel systems, streamline purchase orders, we are looking truly at making things better so that you save on the backend from that. So we're really looking at efficiency. Uh, next slide. Constituent and Support. All right, we'll deal with that. So Create Systems, you'll see things like that. It's exactly what we're doing. It's the same thing. It's it's the initiative that of choice for us right now. When we moved into this facility, you seen that, you saw a lot of people coming together. So you saw a lot more efficiency, and which we would have captured a better number to show just how efficient we are by moving together. Uh, but we're looking at that in General Services, and we're trying to make that difference. Next slide. So if we go to the bubble for Risk Management, one of the things that you see on this one that's a little bit different is that first bubble where it says Risk Management, Customer Service Survey. And more so than just surveys, one of the things we're looking at across the board in General Services is how do we garner garner or gather the voice of the customer? I mean, that's what really should be driving us at the end of the day. We want that voice, and we want, we wanna make a difference. So if we always serving glazed donuts and somebody says, I like sprinkled donuts, then we should be looking at how to better do that. Because that meets the needs of the customer, and that's what we wanna do. Next slide. And you'll see that also right here in Real Estate where it says Design, Develop Survey Questions. And we have to be a little bit better than just surveys. Survey data is is, it's good, and sometimes it's the best you can get, but we're looking at also alternate ways of garnering data and using data to drive the practices that we do. Next slide. And that's Indigent. And finally, yes, our Indigent Cremation Survey, um, or Summary. So eliminating duplications, and that goes back to process improvement. We do some services or processes, and we need to look at those processes and streamline them. As I said, we have under Constituent and Support Services our Pathway to Excellence initiative. And that totally looks at how we do continuous improvement across the board. And what we wanna do across GSD is to do that. Process improvement, continuous process improvement. And with that, that ends uh my presentation.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Could you explain this um, this one point, which is update legislation to allow higher limit of paid services? Is that state legislation?
Uh, so let me uh get Ms. Diane Chavez.
Just wondering what.
Who oversees the Indigent Cremation Program.
I was wondering what that was about. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner O'Malley, hi. Um, Diane Chavez with the General Services Division. Um, you are correct, Commissioner O'Malley. We are putting it on our list of priorities to go to state legislation next year.
What does that, higher limit of paid services, we're limited?
We're only limited six hundred dollars per cremation, and currently, that's nowhere near market where we're at in market, so we're having a tough time finding contractors to help us.
Oh, I see. Okay, I didn't realize the state was involved in that and that they re, that they said there was a limit.
Yes, there is.
So what is it now?
Six hundred currently.
But I mean, so what is the actual cost?
So fortunately, our last contract um had to end because it wasn't enough money for them. We did secure another contract at six hundred dollars. So currently, we are paying six hundred, but on average, it's closer to thirteen hundred.
And how many uh did, how many uh indigent, oh, I shouldn't say that, that sounds like a horrible. How many people were were under this program?
Last year, we hit two hundred and thirteen decedents. This year, we've already hit that, and we're not at fiscal year-end.
That that's something that's really, something we do, I think, that is really important. It's always really sad when it comes to that. That means that in some ways, we as a community have failed, uh, people while they're alive. Anyway. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I wanted to ask, it might be for you as well. What does this eliminate duplication of effort, data collection?
Madam Chair, um, currently, both Bernalillo County and the Office of the Medical Investigator were both trying to locate legal next of kin. We were running similar reports at the same time. We just weren't sharing the information, so when they pulled it, we didn't have it when we received the case. So we were re-pulling and starting from scratch all over again. Currently, we have a collaboration where we're able to get their notes, and we're working further to be able to get more information. So that'll eliminate the duplicate efforts of due diligence.
Awesome. Thank you. Can I, and I, thank you so much. I did have a question for, I think for you probably, Constituent Support Services Summary? That's under your department?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it's not so much specifically a budget question, but what is that? This is for all the ways that people access services here at the county, whether you're paying a whatever taxes or.
And which uh?
I mean, I guess just the whole sort of constituent support services.
So so one of the things that we're doing, Madam Chair, is we're honestly looking at trying to make processes easier for internal customers, one. One of the things that we did with our Business Center, per se, which is in this facility, is you're able to order general-use office supplies. So we did some efficiencies where you didn't have to go out and wait for those supplies. If a county employee needs supplies today, they should have those supplies today, uh, and they shouldn't have to wait for them. So one of the things we did is we put in place some practices where you can order right from your desktop and turn around literally, and they're right in, they're in your hand.
And then the implement graphic design, so is that something new?
And that's something, yes, that's something else we're trying to do. As as we're waiting on branding to approach here, um, we have a graphic design shop. And and we wanna make those services available across the board, but one of the challenges is is doing that via our our online storefront. And we'd like to be able to do that countywide. Now, we've perfected a lot of the service we provide here. Uh, and we've got some of that online, whether that be business cards, stationery or the such. We'd also like to take it a little further to the signage, because we run the sign shop also. So when you have a down stop sign out there, or when you have a street sign that needs replacement like Corona Drive, which I'm sure everyone knows disappears all the time. So we're remaking those signs, and we'd like to be able to just do that from your desktop. So you order, I need six Corona Drive signs. Order from your desktop and it puts our team, it expedites things. Instead of going back and forth between county departments, uh, let's just get it online, get it ordered. We know what it is. Let's expedite this whole process.
Okay. So instead of going and taking the barbola roadside, I should just order one.
Order one right from us, and hey, we'll take care of that.
Just kidding.
It will be in the mail with Madam Clerk's check.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Thanks for explaining that to me.
Thank you all.
That's crazy.
Back to the fabulous Shirley Reagan.
Yeah, I'm back to talk about my division. We're always referred to as a department a lot of times, but we're really a division of diverse functions. And um, I'll start with our revenue slide there. We, we're accountable to all of you for all of the funding that comes into the county, for one. So that's why it looks like the Finance Division has a lot of money, but it's really coming in primarily from grocery receipts tax and uh property taxes. But there's also other investment income and things like that. And in my division, the assessor, she has a fee that she's allowed to charge, so that helps her do, perform her operations. So with all of that, that's about three hundred and fifty-six million dollars. When you look at our stats for our expenditures, um, we are about eighty-seven million dollars. Um, and of that, most of it is non-payroll, which is primarily related to contractual services. And then in General County, that's where we hold a lot of the contingencies, um, and items that get paid out once a year or um, like temporary salaries for the summer help and things like that. We hold those there, vacation, sick leave, sellbacks, and that money we hold in General County. So you'll see that's why there's a lot of dollars there. Also, in Information Technology, you'll see that um, non-payroll is about ten million dollars, and that's mostly all of our software contracts that we have with the, for the county to maintain all of our systems. When we look at our positions, the Finance Division has a total of two hundred and ninety-three positions, of which a hundred and forty-eight are for our two elected offices that I serve as liaisons on to the Assessor and the Treasurer. And they also have uh white-collar employees as well as elected official or appointed positions and rules and regs. And the next slide. And I'm gonna have her stop here, and I'm gonna go hit Maria because she didn't give me any bubbles. No, just kidding. But I don't, she didn't give me any bubbles, but I think it's because finance, I have a little group called the Administration Group. And what we do is um, we work on all the bond financings. We work with the Treasurer on the investments and the cash flows. We do the disclosures and all of the things that are kind of underlying all of the financial transactions. We work with departments. So one of the big goals we have is we realize that the county is growing. The county is big, and the county is adventurous. So we're trying to figure out other financing options and strategies that we might employ. As you know, most of our financing are, is through either general obligation bonds or grocery receipts, tax revenue bonds. Those things are non-taxable and therefore come with a lot of restrictions, a lot of uh heavy weight on them as what you can and cannot do. But some of the opportunities that we have as a county, we wanna venture outside of that. So we're looking at options potentially to mix taxable uh financing options along with non-taxable. And all of those things, we gotta weigh it out, because again, we still have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So we don't wanna go too far into the taxable, but we wanna be able to accommodate some of the growing needs that we have that can't be necessarily confined within the realm of the of the non-taxable financing options. Um, so with that, we, you know, we also, like I said, the investments, we work very closely with the Treasurer and the Board of Finance, which many of you are a part of, on making sure that the county's money is invested properly, that we're following our investment policy, and then we have proper procedures in place to ensure that um the county's money is safeguarded and in control of the Board of Finance and the county commissioners along with the Treasurer. We also have to do a lot of disclosure um on different financing transactions, you know, in addition to uh, different things that we're doing, we have to disclose that. That's a part of that transparency. So we have a, there's a portal called Emma, and that's where we have to put our CAFRs and our any type of financial data, our investments, our loan payoffs, all those sorts of things we have to disclose there as well. So that's kind of what my team does. And another, on top of all of that, they also work with the the departments on, like I said, their construction projects and making sure that they're appropriately accounting for the bond expenditures and spending the money first. You spend grant, you spend bond, then you spend general fund. And we have to do that because once you sell a general obligation bond, the clock starts. You have three years to spend eighty-five percent of the funds, otherwise it chips into becoming taxable, and then that is not a good thing. Uh, on top of that, we administer the ARPA funding, and we did CARES, uh, but I won't talk about that. So in the um Finance Division, we have the Ops, the Operations Excellence Office. And if I go to to her bubble slide, to Maria's bubble slide, the one thing I wanted to focus on there, as you see, there's lots of bubbles. But really, it's about excellence in strategic planning and then linking the budget to that. So she's been real instrumental, and you've heard a lot about it, um, in making her and her team, ensuring that that linkage is occurring. So ultimately, we would be able to take the budget and say, this is how it leaks to the strategic strategic plan. Here's the dollars tied to it, and here's the performance measure. So her and Jennifer are working real closely with departments on ensuring that. Um, and then there's other things that she's doing, as like Julie had said earlier, County Manager, that she's helping the courts, uh, the JCCC, uh, with the strategic planning process. So again, excellence in strategic planning. When I look at the Accounting and Budget Department, um, when I go to theirs, the one thing that, there's two bullets, I guess three, that I really wanna focus on. One is the the um long-term plans. We've been working really hard, Jennifer and her team, and working with departments to develop the five-to-ten-year look at the budget, because we need to, our our funding is very limited, so we have to know what's coming down the path so we can understand. If we take a grant, like a safer grant, like we do a lot of times for a fire, to add personnel, and they defer those costs three years down the road, we can't wait till that third year and say, oops, now we got all these expenditures. We gotta start looking at them here. So we're doing that, and we also do a five-year forecast at a very high level, just so that we know and have an idea of where things are going. One big project that, when you talk about systems, is the Human Capital Management System. That's a partnership with our Payroll Office, our HR Department and our IT Department. Um, that's gonna replace our old, old, old decrepit MPATH system and several other HR systems, which will allow us to be more responsive to employees, allow us to do those um mid-pay cycle adjustments, instead of getting on a manual spreadsheet and doing a manual check. And, you know, all of those sorts of things, and as well as helping HR with the hiring process and all of that. So it's, the project's gonna be about eighteen to twenty-four months. It's kicking off right now, and um it's gonna be a pretty big thing, but a really much-needed uh project for the county. And then um, we also are looking at automating uh the budget preparation. We use a lot of Excel files now, and it's kind of tedious. So we're working at that, as well as when we prepare our CAFR, all of the government-wide financials, that's another big massive spreadsheet. One error, and then you kind of duplicate it all the way across. So those are two projects that we have going on as well. And those things of that last bullet that's there, that helps us achieve that recognition in budget and financial analysis. And then our IT Department, if you look at that and you look at the bullets there, they've been the backbone, and I can't say enough about my IT Department. They've been the backbone and helped us get out a lot of things. They work with the clerk, you know, she's got her team. She, he works with the clerk and making sure that the voters are able to do what they need to do, and the clerk looks good, and the county looks good. And so we wanna support that. We support all of the divisions um in their uh technology needs. Uh, it it gets really complicated, and Robert could probably say it better than I can, but in my little feeble mind, when you, when you pull it all together, it it's all interdependent. And that's when we sometimes find that the older systems start breaking the newer systems and things like that because they can't handle the new technologies. It's like putting, when you put new tires on your car, and then all of a sudden, you can, you don't feel the road anymore. But when your tires are bad, you can feel every bump in the road. But with that being said, um, they've been a a real strong partner with a lot of the departments, with all of the departments, I'd say. But the real priority is the cybersecurity, um, keeping us ahead of the game as much as possible. So um, the partnerships, I'd like to thank you all for helping us through this last, and all of your support there. And then we had a lot of community partners, you know, County Manager, and we had a lot of people step up to help. and we had a lot of people step up to help us get to where we are. And with that knowledge, we'll be able to help others and also improve our posture. One of the big things when we go to bond rating presentations is, that's the one thing they ask about, is what is going on with your cybersecurity? So there's a lot of partnerships going on with Lisa Steel White and her procurement team and legal, making sure that the entities that we enter into contracts with have cybersecurity as well because they have our data, you know? And if they get hit by an attack, then that affects us. But it also has made us adjust our, our emergency plans. We had an emergency plan for payroll. It was gonna be to, you just resort, resort to the paper reports and then start producing everything. Well, we had kind of transitioned out of the paper supports, reports, and put them up in our share drives. Well, when the system went down, we didn't have those anymore. So it kind of like put a halt. But we were able, because of a lot of the proactive work with our cybersecurity team, get in there and stop some of the damage and then start the repair work. So that's really what I wanted to say about the finance. We're one of those department, those divisions that I like to say, we're doing our job when, when your POs go through the system, your budget is there for you to get what you need to do. We've reported it accurately in accounting, the, your computers turn on. You know where you, how you tied to the strategic plan. So as long as those things are working smoothly, then you don't know really who we are. Maybe that's why a lot of people call us a department as opposed to a division. But then we're the first ones when, when those things break. It was kind of like when I used to work at P&amp;M. You didn't know who P&amp;M was until you flipped that light switch, and it didn't, your lights didn't come on. Then it was like, oh, what in the world are they not doing? So with that, I, again, just wanna thank you for, Maria's gonna come up next and kind of tie in the strategic plan. But I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity and, and see if you had any questions.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a number, I mean, when we're looking at the, the new compensation study and the increase, you've basically have put it in the budget. Do you have a number of what, of what that increase would be if we did, you know, the minimum of fifteen and then we did all the other?
Yeah, the, the consultant that Bernadette worked with gave us a high-level figure to kind of address the study needs in its totality.
Okay.
And it was around seven million dollars. So that money has been set aside to look at addressing that. And again, that came from new money. Because as you know, with our budget, we have to first identify what our revenue streams are. And with, so that became the three-seventy-four million. Then you gotta pull out all of the items that we already have obligations for. You know, salaries, the contractual services and all those things, and any increased costs. So when we looked at the net new revenue, we were able to pull aside that, that amount to satisfy the high-level need of the study, which would include the fifteen, getting folks to fifteen dollars, and addressing some compression that goes along with that.
The compression as well. Is there, I, you know, I'm looking through this book, but I, you know, didn't identify it right away. What is now going into reserve? I mean, reserves are pretty high, and I know why they are, but what is now being, what was the increase in reserves?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What was the increase in reserves?
The increase in reserves go up each time the budget goes up.
Right, percentage?
So you, so if the budget goes up, then you have to pay, I mean, not pay, set aside the twenty-five percent.
So what is the reserve now?
Uh, I left that paper up there. I think the, the twenty-five percent is like a hundred-and-fifteen million, and the five percent is twenty-three or twenty-four million.
What is our requirement for reserve, though, Shirley? What are we required to hold?
The DFA is twenty-five percent or three months of your upcoming operating general fund budget. And then the five percent was an administrative resolution that the county set to cover us, cover us above that in case there was emergency needs. So it's a total of about thirty percent that we have set aside.
Okay, so the five percent was?
About twenty-three million.
Okay. So, but you're saying DFA requires either three months or twenty-five percent of the total budget?
Correct. And that's, that becomes like one-time money. So it's like your savings that you've got set aside.
And that's every year it gets that, sorry, Shirley.
She has to keep that twenty-five percent.
That, that twenty-five percent, you keep that every year, and then it stays in reserve for being pulled out of, or?
So we have the twenty-five percent, and then we have the five percent.
So it's about thirty percent that we're putting in reserve?
Yeah, so that, that makes our thirty, and then the, the, there was five million that we have for the unfunded pension liability, but that's a part of our assigned fund balance. So fund balance in its totality is made up of, like, PO, your encumbered and your unencumbered obligations. It's made up of plant, inventory items, and then those fixed reserves that we, that are the required reserves, which are called unassigned fund balance.
I guess what I was asking is, like, so that reserves is every year? And, and it's not spent every year, though, right?
No, no.
You have to, like, request for some reason, wanna get into those reserves?
It, it's not spent at all. The only time that we, we've never, I've been here almost ten years, and I don't believe before you've ever, the county has ever dipped into the DFA reserve, the three months. We did in, was it like two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, when we had the out-of-county transport expenses at the jail? And then we had the economic downturn, and we had the incident in the Treasurer's office. We had to dip into that to the tune of about seventeen million dollars to get our investments back on track. And that's when we reset ourselves. Because at that point in time, it used to be a two-month, which was about thirty-five million dollars. And we realized we couldn't, we didn't have the ability to set aside that much in one-time funding. So we worked with our financial advisor and looked at the best, industry best practices, and they said thirty percent. So we had the twenty-five percent required. So we reduced the other one to just five percent. We say three to five, but we always do five. And the five percent commissioner is, it can't, Julie and I can recommend to you, but it doesn't get spent unless the commissioner approves it to appropriate that funding. But we can make a recommendation if an emergency were to come up, that we needed to use it. But again, it's one-time funding, and the administrative resolution states that if we use any of it, we have a year to pay, to get ourselves to bring it back to where it was.
And that's to get, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, does the, does it keep on building on it? So a hundred-and-forty-plus million, right, this year or from this fiscal year, and then the next year, a hundred-and-forty-plus million, and it keeps building on itself? Or is it, like, returned to that at some point?
It builds on itself. So if we've already got, it looks at the budget. So whatever the incremental amount is, we've already got the hundred, let's say, the, the eighty-some thousand, and we determine after this year's budget, it needs to be eighty-five, eighty-five million. Then we would add an additional five million to get to the eighty-five. So what's there, we just build the incremental amount to keep it going on itself. And it's not a part of the three-hundred-and-seventy-four million. It's a, it's like a savings account on the side.
And it, and it just keeps growing?
Yes, it's like retained earnings in a, for a private entity, you know?
Okay.
So, sorry, there was, so if it was a three-month reserve for operations, what would that be?
So what?
If there was three months reserve for operations, just three months, that number would be very different, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry, I, my ears are really clogged up.
It's okay, here we go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we were talking about three months reserve. You either have three months reserve or twenty-five percent or whatever. If it were three months reserved, could you kind of like guess what that number would be? If we had to have three mon, if, if we did the so-called minimum and did three months reserve, what would that be?
It would be another eighty-some million?
No, not another, I'm just saying if, rather than. You either have twenty-five percent of reserve or you have three months in operation.
They're the same, twenty-five percent, three, three months is twenty-five percent of a year. So it's, it's the, it's the same figure.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay, I missed that.
Some people say percentage, but I like to use the months as well because when you're looking at a year, if it's three months of your operating budget, it kind of tells you, you know, like, for our own personal expenses, they tell you you should have three to six months worth of your expenses in your savings account in case something should happen.
Okay, I see what you're saying now. I was not thinking math-wise. Okay, and that was a hundred-and-twenty, you said, that we have in reserve now?
It's, it's eighty.
Plus the, you said it's about a hundred-and-twenty-five, that the twenty-five percent is about a hundred-and-twenty?
Okay, I take that back. The DFA, the twenty-five percent is a hundred-and-fifteen million, and then the five percent is twenty-three million. So I was off on the DFA reserve. And it's because our budget is, the operating budget is, is getting larger.
Right.
We've been trying to talk to the state Commissioner O'Malley about, I asked about that reserve, and what they said is that, 'cause like the city of Albuquerque, now they're in the billions, but they only have to do one month. But for a small county, three months is what they would really need to help them get along. Ours should probably be somewhere different, but because they do them all together, they haven't really made that distinction. And I asked about, what could we do? Is there any legislation we could look at? Because it's, it's, it's constitutional. So we would have to be able to change something there.
Okay, and this money, of course, is in the investment pool, I imagine?
Correct.
Okay, so that's running interest and that sort of thing?
Right, that's a part of the investments.
Okay. I just wanna know, because I remember when I first got into the commission a hundred years ago, what this feels like. There was such a huge reserve that it actually, there was concern about it being too big, and we actually spent quite a bit of that down because it was really, really big. And I think that sometimes if it's too big, the, you know, people will say, well, you know, well, how come my taxes are still going up, kind of thing? And why are, why is our reserve so big? But I think you explained that.
And that's why I do that one, in the rating agency presentation, that graph that kind of breaks it up so you can kind of see what part is required, what part is really, say, carryovers from the previous fiscal year for our encumbered and unencumbered items that we are gonna pay during that year, and then the inventory piece, and then there's a small amount of contingency within that. But you can see each part to help make that distinction. Because you're right, a lot of people assume that because we have a hundred-and-fifteen million dollars that we can do all of the, the items that are being requested, but that's one-time money versus recurring dollars. And that's what makes it a little more difficult. We would love, somebody pulled up that money tree that they said was in my backyard, but it's not in my backyard. I talked to Dan, 'cause I was on, I'm on the, was on the para board with him before he, his term ended, and I said, what did you do with that money tree? Give it back. And he laughed at me, but.
Just a big trunk.
Yeah. We're a truck. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Shirley, appreciate it.
Shirley, I, I think you said Maria's next, but I did. Under the Operations Excellence Office summary, the, get, just learning that that's under your division. Trying to say the right words. And so like resources for project management and processes. I know we had talked before about, you know, like, some of the projects not having that project manager to follow them through to, to completion and with the already, is that what we're talking about here? And is, and is all, all of this division is under your, or all of this department is under your division?
That is a lot of it. A lot of our projects, IT has a, a project management process for system-type projects. So if there's other operational things, Maria and her team have the, the skillsets and the abilities to help guide people through to ensure that all of the bases are covered and all of the issues are addressed. They also work some with the, the CII team under General Services headed by Carl, not Carl, but, what's his name? Bruce, I know his name, Bruce. So anyway, they work together, and so what they do is they'll go out and look in departments and say, if you say, I have a process that's broken, and maybe it's taking too long, wanna be a little more efficient. So they can help you work through that to cut out the redundancies and things like that. So that's what that's referring to. Because there's a, you know, one of the things we're trying to do as a county to always be efficient, to be more effective. And a big part of efficiency is technology, but also it's looking at your processes. A lot of times, we want to make the systems repeat our processes. But if our processes are broken, then the system's gonna be broken. So it's improve the processes, then your system is gonna be better.
Awesome, and I think this is more of a question for, that I could follow up with whoever, maybe it's Maria or whoever. But the leadership and culture that values employees, diversity, and competitive in job market, like, does that sort of, is that, it sounds like HR, also sounds like a little bit of compensation studies, but then it's in this division, so I guess I'm out of those.
So that, that bubble there is something that is also with HR, one of Bernadette's departments, her, her managers. And Maria sits on one of the teams that's looking at that, and then the part of that is in the strategic plan. So a lot of the, the bubbles or the goals or the focus areas are kind of overlapping and involve multiple departments. I don't know, Bernadette, do you wanna speak to that?
Thank you, thank you, Shirley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Madam County Manager. Yes, so we have lots of initiatives on the table. Leadership is a big one in the county. We are, we have committees put together that are working together to try to develop a more comprehensive leadership program so we can, in a sense, grow our own, if you will. A huge initiative on equity, diversity, and inclusion. I know I've had lots of conversations with Commissioner Casada over the last couple of years about inclusiveness in the county, and what does that look like, and what are we doing today? And how can we improve that? So we took it a couple steps further, wanting to bring in diversity and equity as well. So yeah, we have lots of initiatives that are, that are forthcoming. What else?
I think that's perfect. I just, yeah, I wanna know who to follow up with, too, to get more. I think as the rest of the countries, state, union, is like creating Office of Equity, I wanna know where we're sort of seeing that couched in our work, or, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So with that, unless there's any other questions, I'm gonna have Maria come up and make the connection.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Shirley, thank you to your department, division. I get it right.
Thank you, Shirley, Madam Chair, members of the, or member of the commission. Thank you for having me speak before you this afternoon. My name is Maria Zuniga. I'm the manager of the Operations Excellence Office here in Bernalillo County. I got two bits of good news. One, I think I'm the last presenter today, and two, I only have two slides, so. As you've probably heard throughout the day, my office has been working closely with leadership, elected official offices, county departments, and of course, the Budget Office, Jennifer and her amazing team, over the past seven or eight months to really develop the strategic plan. As you, as you know, strategic planning is our guide, right? It should be our guide for the future. It's expected of us, of county residents, and it's something we need to do. So the way we do strategic planning here at the county is we base it on the principles of being actionable, understandable, transparent, and accessible to everyone. We've got the slide up here which shows the strategic plan framework, one of my two slides. And it has three basic parts, our why, our what, and our how. Within our why, we have the vision, which is about what we wanna become in the future as a county, or what we're striving for, for our residents. Our mission will explain why we exist, and our values really are the guide to the decision-making, the way our employees and leaders make decisions as we move forward as a county. All right, next component, we have our what. So this is where kind of, we started getting a little bit tangible, and you've seen a lot of it today. We started this process with assessing the current situation. That's basically a SWOT analysis, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And we did an extensive process with regard to that. We went out and met with just about everyone you can imagine, department, elected officials' offices, and talked to them about what they thought was going well, what wasn't going well, what were our opportunities, what were our challenges? And most importantly, what we, what they thought could be done to prepare for those. So that's where kind of the budget and strategic planning comes into alignment, planning for that future. We consolidated all of that information, which I'll show you. We consolidated all of that information, which I'll show you hopefully at a meeting next month, um, where we kind of brought together all of this information. You've seen it today in the form of those green bubbles, uh, which are basically our objectives here at the county. Um, but really, we consolidated it all, aligned it to our strategic goals, which have been longstanding, and used it to validate that our goals are still good. We took those, built the focus areas, which I'll show you in just a minute as well, and you've kind of seen throughout the day today, um, and built those focus areas, which are the highest level priorities to achieve the goals as we move forward. Excuse me. Last but not least, our how, which is where the rubber meets the road, um, the objectives, the green bubbles, like to call them, uh, now, after this meeting especially, I think they'll be burned into everyone's memory as those. Um, we, we got those and that's, those objectives are really where we have projects and initiatives. And the real tangible things that we're gonna do in the next couple of years to achieve those focus areas and goals. We're working very hard to align those with the budget, Jennifer and her team. So the budget needs and objectives really should line up and should match and should go hand in hand. Um, so that's what we're working towards and I think you'll see that as we move forward. Action items or how we achieve the objectives, and last but not least, we have performance measures. So those are, that's how we know we're doing good, right? Or how we're doing okay, or if we're not doing good, what do we need to do to change? Um, so that's where we really track, like, you know, are we meeting expectations? And if we're not, what do we need to do to achieve that? And with that, that information is all available on the transparent burnco.gov website in great detail. All right. Yeah, objectives and performance measures all on the website. So of course, we've got the new ones that are coming forth, those will get updated by, uh, July four, or July first, as we move forward into the new fiscal year. Okay, my second slide, lots of information on here, but you've seen it in great detail today. Um, we have the strategic plan goals and the focus areas. You can see across the top, kind of in those colored boxes, are the five strategic plan goals. Um, and I'll kind of just briefly touch on each one of them. Again, you've heard about these in great detail today from each of your departments and divisions as they've spoke through how, what they're doing aligns to these goals and focus areas. Government accountability, you see a pretty much every department aligning to this goal here at the county, since we're all funded with taxpayer dollars for the most part. Um, this is about transparent, accountable delivery of quality services. And you've heard some of the big initiatives in there, about a compens, competitive compensation strategy, adequate staffing, we've seen that across the board, fiscal and strategic alignment, which of course, we're working on just right in this process exactly, investing in our employees and leadership and that diversity, equity and inclusion. Next, of course, we have a big goal of public safety, um, making sure we're meeting community behavioral health needs and public safety of residents. So you see the focus areas underneath tho, those in the gray boxes. I'll just hit on a couple of these, safety and emergency preparedness is a big, big one. Public safety, staffing and programming, another big one in there. Of course, behavioral health services is in there and jail outcomes, improving those, making sure we're doing a great job there. Next goal, community health, investing and changing lives and promote, promoting health of our residents. So here, you know, some of the focus areas we, we saw as a part of the strategic planning process is making sure we're providing diverse recreation opportunities, community housing, senior programming, engaged learning opportunities and indigent services, which you heard about today. Next goal, public infrastructure, um, this is all about transportation, drainage, technology, facilities, infrastructure. You can see some of the big, big initiatives there are about modernizing technology and preparing our cybersecurity posture, which Shirley spoke to, uh, facility and fleet infrastructure as well. All right, last but not least, we wanna make sure we, uh, have economic vitality, right? A thriving, livable community with diverse economic opportunities for the residents of Bernalillo County. We're achieving that through expanding, excuse me, to a regional economic development model, um, engaging our community, supporting local culture and art, ensuring a quality of life, good quality of life. So with that, I just wanna thank you for allowing me to present this to you this afternoon, very high level. Um, definitely wanna extend the opportunity or offer to meet with each one of you as we prepare for the public, uh, presentation of this in April, to go into it more detail, but definitely. But that, uh, that is all I have, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
You, Ms. Zuniga, did you have any question? I have one quick question.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it sounds like maybe you run any of the strategic planning processes for any of the department? Like you know that they're happening and?
Yeah, in general, we work, um, of course, on the countywide strategic plan, as you see here. Um, but then we've kind of been called into action in different areas with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, uh, behavioral health, um, and then hopefully next, the Water Conservancy Board. So it just kind of depends, you know, on, you know, who, who needs help or where we can jump in and assist, yeah.
And then, when, what does evaluation look like? Like, when do we go back and see, like, is that just happen during budget time? Or when, like, what's the checkpoints around a strategic planning process?
So evaluating how we're doing on the strategic plan?
Yeah.
Uh, that's happening pretty much throughout the year. So once we set the strategic plan into place, like you, like I was mentioning, we have those objectives and performance measures. And those we are tracking, my office is tracking throughout the year with all the departments. And some of them are monthly or quarterly or semi-annual, but we're always checking in on those throughout the year. And that's where you could definitely go to our transparency page, uh, the department strategic, department and strategic planning page and get all the information at any point in time, live, real time, on how we're doing on each of those objectives and performance measures.
Okay.
Great question.
So they're, they're on the website or whatever, when you get updates to the, um, as people are updating their evaluate?
Yes, yeah, yeah, as we're progressing, did we start the project? What percentage complete are we, how's it going? All that information's on our webpage.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. Great questions.
All right, I don't have any other questions, thank you for this information.
Thanks, everyone.
Is that the end?
Yes.
I'm like packing my stuff. I wanna thank you all for hanging in there, all of you, this has been a long morning and afternoon, but.
Actually, I'm gonna conclude it.
You are, okay, sorry.
I don't mind.
Thank you all so much. Okay. In closing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioner. In summary, you've heard from the county manager, elected officials, DCMs, uh, directors, OEO. No decisions have been made at this time. And if you have any questions between now and the end of March, please reach out to DCM Shirley Reagan. And she'll provide the agenda as well as detail pertaining to this budget. To reiterate a few key dates, uh, we have April twelfth, which the budget will be presented for approval. And then June first, uh, it will be, uh, submitted to DFA. I would like to take this time to thank the county manager, elective, elected officials, I'm sorry, DCMs, directors, budget staff and OEO. Thank you all for your support and your participation. And this concludes the FY twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget, uh, public hearing. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can say which one.
Well, she just said it.
Madam Chair, we still have a little bit left to go on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, I just keep you track.
Okay, I can't leave you up here by yourself.
Um, oh, we still do have public comment, thank you so much, Julianne, for keeping me on track. Um, Julianne, have any, has anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one who has signed up.
Okay, great, thank you, um, ready?
So I have Mr. Joseph Estrada, if you can make your way down to the podium, you'll have two minutes to speak, which will be timed, if you could please state your name for the record before you start.
Thank you, my, excuse me, my name is Joseph Estrada. And before I start my two minutes, um, I'd like to just say thank you for hearing me and letting me speak. What I'm about to say here is, goes really deep and it concerns a lot of people. So my name is Joseph Estrada, on February tenth, I emailed each of you a letter, um, concerning a blacklist of employee, or non-rehires that is kept by the county manager. And this rehire is, non-rehire has to do with incidents that had nothing to do with the county, okay? Twenty-five years ago, I was a victim of this, okay? Had nothing to do with the county. So this affects countless people upon my research, contacting former employees that said, oh, I was let go because of a traffic ticket or I was let go because of this. And that has something to do with staffing shortages. These people deserve a second chance, we are a second chance state, okay? The legalities behind this blacklist that is supported by the county manager and according to her, she's only granted one rehire. And that's baffling to me. I contacted the Director of Human Resources and I asked her, when this policy that the man, that this county has, when was that in effect? And when was the last time it was reviewed according to labor laws and federal employment laws? And I was told, I do not know, it's been like that since the time I got here. Well, at, my response to that was, things change on a daily basis with case law, on labor laws, hiring and maintaining employment. Um, I'm shocked that I found out that I was on this list when I tried to apply for the MDC jail. And I was baffled by that. I'm sorry, I, I, I've been here all day, I, you know, if I could just finish.
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
Okay, um, we are, like I said, I applied for a captain's position over there at the, at Bernalillo County Jail. And I wasn't even afforded an interview. And I was like, why is that? I have a master's degree in criminal justice and corrections with a minor in business administration. I have certificates and I, I have instructed wardens in international prisons, coached them, mentored them, and I couldn't even get an interview? And I was like, what's going on? So I called and I found out from the human resources that I was on this blacklist, banned for life. I was like, why? Because of an incident that happened twenty-five years ago. And I said, well, I have a full governor's pardon, exonerating everything. That wasn't good enough. So I said, since February tenth, I would like to speak to the county manager. I called, I emailed, I was told, you must write her a letter of requesting to be taken off and why you feel that you should be taken off. I've served my country, I will not bow and kneel in front of her to ask her for her permission and, and beg her for forgiveness. I paid my debt to society, the governor seems to think I did, and that's why I got a full governor's pardon. To this day, she has not returned one of my phone calls. Her, uh, her assistant, Sue Gonzalez, says in my emails, I've given it to her, she hasn't read it. This is a month, it's a forty-five second letter that she has not read, and this has to do with livelihood. Now, in my emails, I put directly, I have solutions to your MDC problem. I have what it takes to turn that around and make this not only a fully staffed place, but self-sufficient. Do I get it, I, I, her silence tells me it fell on deaf ears and she, she wants nothing to do with it. So I said, fine, so I decided I was gonna come here and talk to you and let you know. Whether you guys, I was told that you guys have no say-so in this, which, that's fine. But I'd at least like you to know where I come from and what I was willing to do. I've done so much for the county behind the scenes. I've done so much for the Bernalillo County Sheriff's Department up until six months ago. I have no ill will, I'm trying to help, but when I get doors slammed in my face and I read on, on, uh, I hear on the news about how MDC is flailing and, and is upside down. And I look at everything and I ask questions from guards over there. And I'm telling you, there's a solution to your problem, but you can't find it when you don't answer the phone or return phone calls.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada, so much. Thank you for bringing this important issue and I will definitely follow up to learn more about the blacklist and have gotten a little bit of conversation, but I will follow up with that. And, um, yeah, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and waiting today.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you all.
Great, okay, thank you so much, no other public comment, thank you. Um, and commissioners, any questions, comments? No, thank you, um, if there's no other meeting, we will adjourn for today, thank you.